Mexican free press in the house. Right here. Today is February twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five. We're in the city of Espanola. Uh, there's a lot of, uh, furious, um, constituents within the the city of Espanola that's upset with the Espanola governing body. They, uh, they wanna put a pellet home. The city of Santa Fe is collaborating with the city of Espanola to build a pellet home community in an area on the west side of Espanola where there's a lot of residents and some schools. So some constituents came out and they wanna get their voices heard. So we're here at the city council meeting. And let's see what is this goes. Corey. How are you? How are you? Good. Need to be a favor. Cause these governing bodies like to lie. You wanna, wanna be my witness that I sign in? Are you scared? Don't be scared, bro. That's, this is the mayor's mom. That's the mayor's mom right there. She's looking. She hates me. Good evening, everyone. Thanks for coming in. This is gonna be an intense meeting tonight. So a lot of constituents in a little town that's called Eliano and Santa Cruz. This governing body is in, and collaborating with a, uh, with the city of Santa Fe to build a pellet home community inside this guy, these people's residence, these constituents' residence. So, uh, it's gonna be kind of a packed house. A lot of people are very upset. Regaining the situation.
I know.
Bro, my hen fan.
Probably your hen fan. I wanna go sit on the
Oh, you go sit on the other.
I'll go sit on the, on that side.
Okay.
We're on opposite teams tonight.
No, it's just lambing. There's a difference. I don't do that. Ah. No. I want you on the top. Hey Beth. Bethany. Bethany. Watch flip that page over. Do you see me there? And half these people are from like backwoods living. It's like, oh, rehab. They're just gonna use this out with, that's why.
Just in case.
Yeah.
Did you use your, or are those dead?
No, they're halfway.
I have mine in my purse. Thank God I worked up the claustrophobia, right?
It's reserved.
Hey, you're hunting, boy. Good.
See that girl that's walking? See that girl? That's my number one fan. She loves me. I know. It's money, money. She gotta raise. There's some chairs down there on the opposite side if you guys wanna sit down. Yeah, on the other side. Also, boo chew. Hello, hello, Mike. Now, what did they put those up for?
You.
That, that's new. Look, they put up a corral. I just noticed there's a corral in front of these governing body people. That was never like that before. That's strange. That's, that's very strange.
Um, well, there's, there's parking in back because first, uh, they can't turn them back for a long while. Like, your drink is up when they put corals.
I've, that's.
Oh, Dennis, time to say hi.
Where do you see him?
Huh?
Where do you see him?
Oh, we talk all the time. And I took care of this, uh, his family cat.
Hmm. You see how I said hi to him?
I bet you John requested those go up.
I wonder why.
To prevent people from being able to
I, I'd say you.
I know. It prints it out. Sorry. It's like an action movie. My eyes, it stays.
Give me, give me, give me one, please. This is safe, bro.
Excuse me, one more time. Apparently, you cannot leave because if we leave, we can't come back.
Not even a boat.
Like, so then, if you leave, then somebody else can come in place.
Watch, watch.
Justin just went out that corner.
I don't know how long it lasts.
Can I stand in front of the table?
Yeah.
You're very, very proud of yourself. I'm glad you're cool. Let's walk in drink. Hey, they're putting the, are you?
Slow down. Slow down.
Pouring water.
Good evening, everyone. The time is six oh six. Thank you for joining us for the regular meeting of the month of every of the Españo City Council for February twenty fifth, twenty twenty five. Would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
An invocation this evening will be led by Councilor Aaron Salazar.
Heavenly Father, I pray that we will have a productive meeting today. I pray that we will be able to discuss and tackle the important things we need to tackle and be efficient in handling those things. I also pray that you give us the grace to come up with the best possible and morally right solution available that's been the people we serve. Could you, in thy prayer, pray?
Amen. Thank you, Councilor Salazar. Would the clerk please call the roll this evening?
Mayor Protem, P. Martinez. I'm here. Councilor Justin Salazar Torres.
Present.
Councilor Denise Benavides.
Present.
Councilor Aaron James Salazar.
Present.
Councilor Pedro Valdez.
Here.
Councilor Manet Rodriguez.
Present.
Councilor Felicia Chuleta Toya.
Present.
Councilor Samuel Levine.
I'm going to be here.
Thank you, we have a prayer.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. It has come to the attention of this governing body that an effort has been taken place by members of the staff to move in a direction that has not been authorized by the governing body. We want to reiterate this to the public and officially inform them. In an effort to respond directly to this situation, the governing body requests from the public their patience and ability to hear our formal report regarding the issue many of you are present for this evening. This requires a reorganization and remuneration of items to be discussed at tonight's city council meetings. Therefore, I'm recommending the following amendments to the agenda. I'm requesting that Item Nine, City Manager Report, move up to immediately after the approval of the agenda. City Manager Report will also include the Director Report.
Uh, Mayor, I'd like to motion to approve, but also.
Over the minute, Councilor, if you don't mind. That's my report, and that's a remuneration. Additionally, I need to inform you under the advisement of the City Attorney, I caution the members of the City Council from discussing or sharing an opinion prior to taking formal action on any decision which through the official process of the municipal code requires any development application needing to be reviewed by the City of Espanola Planning Commission. Ultimately, any decisions from the Planning Commission may be appealed through administrative and judicatory appeal on the findings of that hearing which could come before this governing body. And in that instance, the governing body shall serve as a judge and must avoid any appearances of prejudgment or bias which at that point may be appealed immediately to District Court. Councilor Salazar Torres.
Thank you. Uh, I'd like to motion to approve with that said amendment, but also another amendment. Uh, because for whatever God forsaken reason, we can never start a meeting at six, even though that's what we advertise. I'd like to move a public comment to go right after the City Manager Report. Uh, just so these folks can get home without any waiting, please.
Second. Motion made by Councilor Justin Salazar Torres to move Item Nine to be immediately after approval of the agenda, followed by public comment, and the agenda will stay intact for the remainder of the meeting. Second, by Councilor Samuel Levine, there is no discussion of an action to approve the agenda. If all in favor of the motion signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Inside, let the record reflect, everyone is present in the chambers tonight, so unless there is a resolution, which there is not, we may do votes by acclamation this evening. Alright, so their agenda is adopted with the amendments. Now can I get a motion to adopt the agenda with the amendments?
So.
Motion made by, uh, Councilor Samuel Levine, second, by Councilor Pedro Valdez. All in favor of the motion signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign, thank you. Moving on, City Manager Report, Director's Report, Mr. DeHart.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Protem. Councilors, you have before you the reports, but I'm asking for clarification for, uh, for the social services director, Michelle Rancio, to, uh, give her a report because this is what everybody's here about tonight. And so, um, all the clarification, or any other questions that you guys can have in the public comment, so address it first and maybe you can have a more idea what's going on, so Michelle can use.
Good evening, Mayor, Protem, Mayor, Council, City Manager. I'm here this evening, um, to dispel some misconception, I believe. Um, the Director's Report specifically is for a Director's Report, so that you can see initially exactly what the department is working on on a monthly basis. All of the information in this Director's Report is preliminary and they are proposed plans for the future.
Council have any questions? And again, I would yield to the advisement of the City Attorney within those parameters laid out. Councilor Samuel Levine.
Michelle, can you just go ahead and clarify, uh, who is the misconception?
Sure. So I believe a misconception that I have possibly heard is that, um, there may be homes that are added to a specific location, and I'd like to clarify that if I can do so. So, in regards to the Northern Crisis Center, right? It is a domestic violence shelter that is located in Elano. Currently, they have victims there who can only stay there for thirty, sixty, or ninety days. Upon discharge, where would these individuals go, right? Adding to essential homelessness to the city. So a potential proposed plan, once it follows through city council process, which you guys are familiar of, I'm sorry, council is familiar, that I have never done anything without thinking things through, getting authorized information, and providing accountability for my department. I have done that specifically for the last eight months and counting. So ultimately, a proposed home would be for a transitional services located for the domestic violence shelter itself.
Follow-up, Councilor Levine. Can you, um, describe, like, what the specific page that said all the collaborations were for this, um, project or potential project?
Can you describe that further?
So in, in the report, there was a page that listed in collaboration with one of the items was with the city of Santa Fe and Pellet Homes, and then with, uh, Peckham Valley, um, Rio de la Tia Center. Could you just clarify what, uh, what the processes or what's, what you're planning on with that or the preliminary stages?
Sure. So the preliminary stages, which I would like to clarify, it's nothing in black and white at this moment, right? This is nothing that has been confirmed. So I always list collaborations because that is what the city depends on, is its collaborators. This department does not work solely on its own. There is no way that a department can be as successful as it has been in social services perspective without the collaborators assisting. So in regard to this, a collaboration with the city of Santa Fe has already happened because there are many resources that have been provided to the city already, not only just to social services, but to other resources in the area. So it's not just specific to this department. Now ultimately, Pellet Homes is the name brand, Pellet is the name brand of the homes. Now, this ultimately, if approved by the correct channels, right? Request for proposal, planning and land use, all of the specific things, especially finance, right? All of that has to be included in order to do a correct proposal to submit to everyone to understand that this would be a permanent solution, right? If and when it does happen. Now, these homes would be potentially a process in the future if they were to say, we see all of the great that is coming out of this city, could you utilize this from one collaborator to the next? To use it as a potential pilot program in the future to help the city of Espanola itself, for the residents to stop homelessness in its tracks. Because right now, it's forced homelessness everywhere you go. When you don't have enough housing, you don't have enough availability and resources for an actual agency, that produces homelessness itself. So in the future, when this plan, if it ever comes to fruition, and this actually does work, and you know, uh, the city council does approve, if and however that may happen, this would be a potential plan. Now, the reason I included this is to provide transparency for my department, so that the community can see exactly what social services thinks would be best in order to help stop its crisis.
Well, I yield to Councilor Salazar Torres at this time.
Thank you. Uh, Michelle, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Uh, but there's still a lot of misconception because obviously the, the report goes out to the public, they're able to read it and, you know.
Yes, sir.
Uh, you say transparent is what I guess is the word I'm trying to look for.
Yes.
Um, however, you said that this home, okay, uh, singular, not plural, um, was to help the crisis center.
Yes, a transitional home to help the crisis center.
Okay, a transitional home, so is this the Pellet Home that was, I don't know, purchased or owned or is owned by Peckham Valley?
No, sir.
That's going to be utilized up there, or is, where is this Pellet Home?
Sure, if I can explain. So, um, to the Pellet Home, I, I think that's just what it's called because that's the manufacturer of it. So that's what they're called, but it's for a safe outdoor space. So the homes are owned by the city of Santa Fe. Now, they said if you would like to utilize this on a six-month basis, but we would have to give that back to the city of Santa Fe afterwards because they have plans that they're working on for their homes and their safe outdoor spaces. But they said because the city is moving as forward as it is, would you like to use this for your residents? And I thought this would be amazing to help the people with the domestic violence shelter, to house them so that they don't end up homeless. So none of these are purchased by anybody else, it's owned by the city of Santa Fe with after the six-month pilot program to return that back to the city of Santa Fe if potentially that were to happen in the future. That's why I mentioned it as a pilot program, because it's not permanently set.
Right, so, so we're just going to follow up on that. Yeah, go ahead, Councilor. So, so we're speaking, obviously, now two different subjects.
Yes, sir.
About one for homelessness and whatever we're being, and now this transitional housing for the crisis center. Um, what is in effect right now? What, what are we rolling with here? This seems like, like things are, are done.
No, sir, no, sir. So that's why I mentioned this as a proposed estimate, right? So if I can kind of reiterate, and I'll give more information on that, this right now is a potential that the city has, this is a potential for the city to advance. We are already light years ahead of other communities because of the programs that we have instilled with the city. So right now, this Director's Report was just informational to show what the city is capable of to achieving in the future. That's why there's no set date, there's no, there is an address because I had to mention the address in Elano next to the crisis center to give a perspective of idea of what this would serve for what population. That way assumptions wouldn't be made to say, well, this is a home that's going to be placed, and we're just going to place all these people. There's never been anything that I have placed in any direction without thinking it through, providing a scope of work, potential services, potential fees.
Mayor Protem, P. Martinez.
Thank you, thank you, Michelle, for your presentation.
Yes, ma'am.
I have to tell you that in, in the past, they've been extremely happy with the work that you've done with homeless. And they've been extremely happy with your attitude towards our community and the love and care that you show for this community. Concerning this situation, though, I have to be honest and say that I think this whole governing body was stunned by this document and by the revelation of what was shared in this document. And, and I need people to understand that when I opened up the packet online, I could not get past page one on the, on the documents from your report. I could only see page one, and I could not move past that unless I print it. If I printed, then I'd have the whole packet, but if I didn't print it, I couldn't read the, the packet.
Yes, ma'am.
So the public sort of found out about this before the governing body found out about this. We had no idea that any of this was in place.
That is correct.
Say that again. Or, or at least I'm thinking that nobody did. And, and if you did know about it, just be honest and say, yeah, you did know about it. But I did not know anything about this. This comes as a stunning revelation to me.
That is correct.
And if I'm honest, I'm just sitting back going, what the heck? What the heck? You know, we are tasked with a leadership in this community for a reason. These types of situations are very contentious.
Correct.
Who is going to hear about this first if not the governing body? My phone is ringing off the wall, and I'm saying, well, you know, I think the original plan that we had thought of originally, which this is not anywhere close to that, let me state that again. The original plan that we had thought of, the funding help group, am I correct? Yes, and then the person that owned the property that we had thought about passed away. So in my mind, I thought for sure that whole thing was dead in the water. Then I read this document, and I find out that, wait a minute, wait a minute, what the hell is this?
Right, and I can explain.
And, and, and to me, I'm going to tell you this. Me finding out about stuff on social media, me finding out about stuff when somebody's calling me, me finding out about stuff after a, a letter was sent to PMZ, me finding out about this stuff, and then after the fact where I've already discussed things with people that trust me, it creates mistrust because it sounds like I lied.
Right.
And there's where I get offended. Because I don't want to be considered that person.
That's correct.
So I'm just saying that in order for this community to strive to move forward, every single person in here has the right to defend what they're doing. I'm grateful that you're here. I'm grateful because it shows us that we have people in this community that give a shit about what happens here. And it's important for us to understand that we need to work together. We cannot be in the dark. If we're in the dark, we can't make good choices. We need to all have the information to make the choices that we need to make. And this governing body is responsible for guiding those choices. And circumventing the council and going around and not letting us know a damn thing about this is not right in my eyes.
So I'd like to explain that. So this information for the Pellet Homes, which is such a hot topic at the moment, the reason that was submitted is because I was invited to speak at the legislative session on October the fourth. During this legislative session, I requested four million dollars for the city of Espanola and its residents. The reason that packet was submitted was for everyone to review to see exactly what I was asking for funds for. This is nothing new. These homes were during the, um, town hall that we had back in October that was held at the convento, that was a public town hall meeting. So the community has been aware of this, they have seen this, they know that this has happened. The reason this was attached was to justify my reasoning and going forth to the legislative session. So nothing was submitted in order to say, this is the actual plan, and this is the money that I need to go forward with that. Because I not only have the response to the council, to the mayor, to the city manager, but also to the community. So these plans were just that, which is a scope of work that was submitted to request money for the city that the city is capable of moving forward with. And when I say moving forward, that's where the city can actually, they have, I think there's a misunderstanding. The city is capable of so much, there is so much potential here. And when I see this money available for the city, for my residents, my family, my community, I'm going to go for it. Because why should all of the other counties and cities and states and all of these other places have this abundance of funds that they can go and do on and do whatever they can do but the city of Espanola can? have this abundance of funds that they can go and do on and do whatever they can do, but the city of Espanola can't? So my voice is just that, my voice is for the city, for the community to go and speak. So when I go somewhere, it's not just myself, I have the community that I think about. And this is heartbreaking because I have done so much for the last nine months. And I have never seen a community so confused and misguided and thinking that this is exactly what's going on with. During all of this misconception, not one person reached out to social services when my number is plastered everywhere to say, what is going on, what's happening? Instead, they listen to the negativity, the comments and the abuse the city is giving back to itself. That is learned helplessness, that is the textbook of learned helplessness. Because you would rather listen to the negativity instead of actually getting the help that the community deserves. You don't see this every day like I do, I am out in the community every day. I am boots on the ground. I see the faces of these people and I bet you don't even know that this city itself has the highest level of victimization itself. Domestic violence alone, substance use, self-medicating, and it's being held out by people who don't understand that they're spreading these comments and these rumors. I think I have proven myself, since I have been here for the last eight months, that I would never do anything to hurt this community, but only to go. And so I, I feel personally that this is, this is the transparency. You don't see how many people this department has helped to get jobs, to get houses, to get all of this stuff that they damn well deserve. I apologize for the crime, but you don't understand the passion that I have.
Clarification about the director's report. What I wanna say is that we're not very good about communication. We're not good about communication and clarity to our community. I don't think there's a question about transparency, but our communication is terrible, terrible. And I think that's what this is.
And I have an answer for you.
I'd like to say also, that when we have these types of decisions of this magnitude, that affect our communities, we have a responsibility, not just one meeting. I get, we had a meeting at the convento, that's just one. We need to have community meetings so that our community has feedback and guidance for this governing body and for you as the social work director. Our community matters, their voice matters, and how they feel and how they s- see this community moving forward is essential. It's essential. We do this in all facets, not just talking about homelessness and housing. We do this in recreation, we do this in all areas. We do not include our community. It is not just our decision, it's every person that contributes to this community and lives here. Just wanna reiterate what Mayor Proten said. This was not something that we knew about. This was something that we learned about, probably all at the same time that you all heard about. But we're here today, we're here today to discuss it, to hear what you have to say, and hopefully have unified plan to move forward. Um, the mayor went, the mayor went further and created this committee where we're supposed to be meeting and talking about these things, and then moving them through the channels, right? Full council and whatever is decided at the committee level will be approved, accepted, or not with the governing body. So, thank you for the work that you do. I don't think anybody is questioning your hard work and your dedication to the homeless population, to those that are, uh, facing addiction. Thank you for doing that, because we should have a commitment to helping our community. But we also have a responsibility to our communities that contribute, to our G R T, that contribute to every facet of our community. And I'm glad that you're here tonight and I'm sorry that this is what we're discussing, but it's really important. So I look forward to hearing your comments. Thank you.
Um, I'm gonna go to Councilor Beneditas first, I'll come back to Valdez. Um, I'm gonna allow everyone the opportunity to speak before we go back to discussions from each person.
Thank you so much, Mayor. I wanna take a little step back and, and I want to talk a little bit about what has been done that brought to Iraq today. And there's a lot of it, so I can't talk about all of it, but I want to talk a little bit about the progress that has been made in getting over thirty-four individuals off the street and into treatment. We did that with the help of Peckers Valley, we did it with the help of Pathway Shelter staff, we did it with the help of Darian's place, we did it with the help of Santa Fe County's treatment facility. Uh, we did it in, in vouchers for hotels where they could be picked up, bus tickets to those that often do not have help, that work from our area that wanted to go home, we got bus tickets. We have moved forward in every way possible to bring this community the assistance that they need. We've worked hard with the group to bring a grant, to bring a win program into our community. We brought the reentry program into our community. The reentry program is going to be vital and play a vital role with Michelle as voter staff who is located in Espanola here today. These things have just been accomplished within the last few weeks. Michelle and I have met in the controversy of who I had hoped would have been on the agenda here tonight before I found out of all the discommunication and misconception out there. It, it, it's, it's. That is, ma'am, it breaks my heart because there has been so much work. Apparently, we are working with Darren's place on a detox facility that in, includes two judges of huge amount of individuals, Councilor Toya, Councilor Doe, I sit in there, we're creating subcommittees. Darren's place is going to work together with the reentry program, which is around the summer with Peckers Valley. We are going to include our law enforcement, our firefighters, a new individual Michelle has hired. And I, I wanna talk a little bit about city of Santa Fe. This just happened Thursday or Wednesday this past week. So Michelle contacted me saying that she had received an email from somebody who she thought was from Santa Fe County, she was driving up the plane. And I said, no, Michelle, I don't think so, because Santa Fe County or not, we don't have any pellet homes at all. And I said it had to be somebody else. So she said, all right, let me, let me look at the email, I'll talk to you about it. She told me it said it was city of Santa Fe. Right before she contacted me, I got an email from Mayor Weber to see if the city of Santa Fe could work together with the county of Santa Fe on a pellet home community because the city of Santa Fe had over a hundred and ninety-four pellet homes or something like that, right? And, and I said, actually, Mayor Weber, that, that this, Santa Fe County is going to discuss a project of any sort at any time of collaboration, because I work for Santa Fe County. So at that time, the director newly hired by city of Santa Fe contacted me and I had a conversation with him. And he said, we are hearing about all the amazing programs and things that you have brought to Espanola and how you have now cut your homeless population down. We are here to assist you, we have some pellet homes in storage that we would like to offer to the city of Espanola to assist you. They would be temporary for three months until we get the community in Santa Fe completed. And I said, three months won't help us, sir, and the reason for it is because in working with the reentry program, we have identified, identified a home for sober living. We also identified another home that has been donated to us in El Rancho by another individual for sober living. Sober living is a much better solution in my opinion than a pellet home will ever be. The reentry program is also going to work, not just with homeless, with anybody in this community that needs a job, that needs housing, that needs case management. We are also in collaboration in opening a much larger food market via the food depot so that there is never, ever, ever a single member of this community homeless ever again. To include our seniors, our veterans, our homeless, anybody who is suffering. We have worked diligently to put these programs together. The miscommunication via social media is insane. And for us to listen to some of the things there without vetting the information first is also insane. And, and, and I dare to tell you that all of these programs I share solely to benefit this community. They're programs that have never been in this community to assist anybody of the community. Those programs are absolutely necessary. We are still working with Pathway Shelter, there are still twenty-five tents there that need to be addressed. We cannot currently address them because individuals in those tents that want assistance that need. There's no place to send them currently, Darian's place is full, uh, Peckers Valley School, Santa Fe Recovery School. So we have to do what we can do, what's within our means to do. And I will tell you that everything that we've done thus far has cost the city zero dollars. Zero dollars, we don't at all deal grants, deal partnerships. And that's the intention, is for us to do as much as we can do, because the city can't afford to do a lot of these things. They are not cheap, by any means. I did have a conversation with Michelle after I attended numerous calls Saturdays, Sunday, Mondays. And, and when I looked into the report, I did talk to Michelle and I did feel like the report had been constructed differently than I thought. I, Michelle was open to my critique. I did tell her that there were things that maybe needed to be clarified. I did tell her when you do your monthly reporting, you're reporting on things that maybe are the worst, maybe at the end you put in process, uh, you know, not viable, something else to further clarify the things that are happening within the community as she talks to individuals, entities, groups, and let me tell you, there are many. There are many that want to come and assist Espanola currently. There are other programs that we're working with currently today, like programs that we hope that we bring to assist us. And, and so, I, I, I just feel as though, could the communication be better absolutely? Could the communication to the constituents, to our community be better absolutely? I also mentioned to Michelle, just last week, what you need to do is that we work on these themes. Put them down, even if it's just handwritten. Yeah, under Councilor Toya, she now has a page to be able to talk via that page to the community and allow the community to know what we're working on. So we need to do a better job, just working together on anything with each other as well. And, and my hope, now that we brought the programs in to Espanola via, uh, the community that I chair, that's the mayor's task team with, was to actually have those individuals here in mind so that we can talk about how now we can move forward because we have the programs in the community. Unfortunately, we were not able to get them on the agenda, but we will at the next meeting. So Michelle, I, I, I commend you for everything that you're doing. Uh, create some things to done better, yes, are there still a lot of things we need to do, yes. Is, is everything absolutely beneficial for our community going forward, yes. I believe that wholeheartedly.
I do, I just have a comment after that, um. So, as, as we were talking about transparency, the reason I did this and submitted this is for the city to see it. Because I know my director's reports are public. That's why in this information I put proposed, because I do, would like to hear more from the community. That's why I submit the documents I do, so that people see what I'm working on and they can say, you know what? I think that's an okay idea, but what if we do this or do that instead? That's why everything I submit says proposed or for the future. So when I sent this over, it was for proposed so that I can see what the community has to say as well. As far as direction and advertising more of the information, I just sent over a memo to request to have a page for social services itself, just so that I can get that information out there, so the community can see what I'm doing. And that just recently happened, I think last week on Thursday or Friday, that it got approved.
Councilor Pedro Valdez. I just wanna say that, uh, I don't know if someone is starting listening to what, uh, our, uh, people are saying. Michelle, I read all your reports. I read all your reports. And I, I go to the city manager and he tells me, why not? I see Denise, the same thing, she's brought up all this stuff. And we know what, what you're talking about, what Espanola can do. I, I've been here in the council thirty-two years. And if we didn't tackle some of these things that we need for the, for the city and for our residents to live comfortable, I don't think that Espanola wouldn't be around. But because we tackled those problems, I can say one thing, not on my backyard. Everybody says that, not on my backyard. I had the National Guard army writing back on my, my house every morning. You could hear the trucks, the people and everything. And I was glad that the National Guard army was there next to my house, because if something happened, hey, I got somebody to back me up. Another thing is, uh, the tre- treatment planning is on bill. We got a lot of controversies, I even lost a couple of times that I ran because people were upset with me, because I, I was the one wishing for that treatment plan to be there. Guess what? When you flush the bathroom, it goes someplace. So we have to, no matter what it is, it's for Espanola, it's for the people of Espanola that we're doing that. There's, there's a lot of projects that have been done in the thirty-two years that I've been here, never been controversial. But this is one thing that I could see in. I read my library, I'm tired. It says, it says, share your food if you're hungry, give shelter to the homeless. And do not hide from relatives who need your help. Suppose a brother or a sister gets out cold and dandy food, if one of you says to them, go in peace, keep warm, and well fed, but do nothing about it, it's not, it's not good. We have to care for our people. It's not just us, there's those that need help, and we need that to do the help. In this country, to do that, is tackle some of these problems that we have in Espanola. So, I just wanna say that, that I was aware of all these things that are happening, that you could continue saying that that we haven't heard about it or that. But, like I said, I have read all the information that Michelle has given us, Denise and others, and the city manager. And, and I'm glad that I, that I get involved in those things. Thank you, Michelle.
...on the radio, you want to turn on there?
Hi.
Thank you.
So Mayor, I suggest we recess, then some of these folks, because a lot of people are probably listening as well, trying to get what's going on, so let's pause until...
Denise has been on the entire time, um, I understand.
Nope.
They're listening to the music and waiting for our meeting to stop.
Something happened too, because Frank couldn't get on either, and was having a call. I'm calling Tomasz, Adam. Diana, is the root of the song on there?
You stay strong like a deep body. You didn't do anything wrong, you didn't, you know it, you know it.
Diana, is anyone in the waiting room? She says she's waiting to be led in.
No, I think she's waiting the first three minutes since.
Time is six forty-six. I caution the governing body from discussing anything on this agenda this evening with members of the public, which may be come before this body at a latter date. The time is six forty-six, before we convene in ten minutes.
Yeah.
Thank you, we apologize for this inconvenience and we appreciate your patience. We are now back online with Gisele and the Real Grandson. We're gonna continue discussion, I have left. I believe councilor Dan is just wrapped up. Officer Jennifer, did you have any comments? No, 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 we're still on the director's report.
I'll make mine quick, I just wanted to echo what my fellow councillors, councillor Rodriguez and councillor Valdez have said. First with councillor Rodriguez on the communication portion of it. I will share in the frustration that it's hard to receive phone calls from constituents or see comments and stuff like that, social media and other places. When people pass by and ask questions, especially about this topic, when we don't have all the information. I do agree with Protem, it kinda makes us look like we are trying to hide something. But in all honesty, the information, it is true, we got our, in our packet is what we, what we knew. It was brought up in back in October as far as a potential thing that we were looking at. But I do also want to add to that is, we also have to keep in mind that we keep asking people for solutions. We keep asking staff, community members to come with ideas on how we fix this. I know from my campaign show, which is almost a year ago now, the unhoused was the number one thing that people had concerns about. The number one thing. And my frustration is, is I feel that every time even a potential solution comes discussed, talked about anywhere, whether it's brought to this governing body to the unhoused committee, that it's shot down, no matter what. And I don't think that that's fair, I don't think that it's fair, especially to our services director, who is really just trying to bring solutions, now are all solution viable, no. Not even ideas that we have. And, and so we are really, really looking to the community. I'm so glad you're all here, I like hearing from the constituents and the public, I truly do. I think those in my district who have called me know that I pick up that phone and I will call you back, I do listen. I'll go visit with you. But at the same time, going back to the original point, if I don't have information, I can't defend, and I can't defend the departments, I can't defend the governing body. But we have to hold our own selves accountable, we have an unhoused committee that hasn't met in a while. So, information that I may have learned there, I, I can't say that I can really speak to some of the things that were, have already been discussed tonight because I'm not aware of those things, it's done in pockets and that needs to, that needs to change. The other thing is, is when we're bringing solutions and we hear from you guys tonight, I really hope that you look to compassion, like, as compassionate councillor Valdez said. You know, he started with, nobody wants them in their backyard, that is what we hear all the time. But these folks are human, they need help, they have to have a place to go. And it's gonna be up to us sitting up here to make those hard, hard decisions in conjunction with the community and Michelle. So, all I'm asking for is, if you're having, if you're gonna bring a solution, please bring one other than not in my backyard, thank you.
Officer Aaron, some aside.
Just real quick, I'm not gonna repeat everything, I mean, we all know. I just wanted to bring up something about Michelle, you know, thank you, appreciate you for everything that you do, your hard work. Yes, you're a smart young lady. We all, we make mistakes, but we learn from them, but negativity that we also hear, you know, social media and stuff doesn't really help. So, Michelle, just, you just continue what you do for the city, you know, we really, really appreciate everything that you do. Thank you, Michelle.
That's super convenient. Yes, I really could follow up. When I talked a second ago about the, I'm sorry, I spoke a little bit earlier about the two homes that Michelle are working, Michelle and I are working on with Natasha from the grant. Those homes are not located in Espinola, I just want that to be clear. But they are gonna be from the individuals from this valley. And, and the reason for that is because, and here that are viable as of yet, that could be turned into any type of super green facility, right? So, that's the reason for that, and the other reason for that is because the grant program, the larger part of your staff is out of government, and we do not have the staff here to be able to manage that type of facility, and we want to lead to the expertise of those individuals. I just want that to, to be said so that people don't feel like it's gonna be in Espinola, right? And, and just for clarification there.
Thank you. Councillor Southburn-Corris.
Thank you. Talk about lessons learned, right? You would think that we would've learned last time, you know, when we had things that weren't going right here at the city and we've been asked about communication forever and always. The bug stops with us guys, on this side of the diet, it stops with us. And I've said this a thousand times, and I'll say it a thousand times more, that our staff needs our support for one. Okay, we can't just let them run around, you know, trying to find solutions, trying to, whatever, they need our help. And I, I say that as lessons learned because who vets these reports? Who vets this stuff? You know, we can say social media and all this stuff back and forth, but when I get a screenshot of the actual, of the report, it, it's not wrong. It ain't wrong, it's a screenshot of what our packet says. Literally, it does, it's literally the report. The only I was questioning was the date on it, because I don't know if that changed at all today or for whatever reason, but it does say today's date now on the report. But, those, these are, we need people to vet these agendas, vet these reports, vet these things because, I agree, you know, absolutely put it in the public's eye. But it takes a special meeting for something that has a name like this, that there's a lot of stakeholders involved, a lot of stakeholders, taxpayers, people that sustain this city. You know, when they see something like this and literally hit us right there, we can't deny it.
Right.
It's, it, it is a misconception. So, we need to vet these agendas, we need to better make sure that we get stuff on time and not late and having to read things the night before, all this stuff, it sucks. It's horrible. But, we also need to give you guys training, you know, if you guys need trainings or whatever it may be to know what path, you know, you need to take to bring stuff, to follow the governing body or what happens, that's all part of the training process. You know, it, it's things like this, like I said, there's a lot of stakeholders and I'm not gonna hinder my vote, but, we, we just need better training, we need to present things correctly, you know. There was a lot of comments from back here that, you know, I hope don't hinder anybody else's vote, but, city manager, mayor, governing body, let's get them trained, let's help them out and let's vet these things as they go out in public eye, so we know what we're doing. Special meetings, special sessions, special something. Like, we need to do something. You know, it doesn't take a city council meeting with one action item. Mind you, the agenda has one action item and it's already set fifteen, which, we're absolutely here to work for our public and listen to everybody. It, it's just absurd, I, I just can't understand or wrap my mind around why we're putting information out without issue, I guess we should be from here. Thank you.
If I can add to that, if I may have a comment? May I? So, I understand and I get that, I understand everybody's point of view and their conceptions and the ideas of what they've heard. But ultimately, at the end of the day, this report was submitted for review so that you could understand what I am working towards getting. Not the misconception of not communicating with all of you as I do, but for you all to see the packet, to see what the potential could be.
Councillor Lido.
I think the councillor that had the most points on today about this topic is probably councillor Rodriguez, it's communication. And I think this city dramatically struggles with communication. Part of that is access. We need to make ourselves more accessible to the public. We need to find ways to make it easier for the public to understand what we're doing. I think tonight, our technical difficulties are a demonstration of just how, how frustrating it is to try and keep up with us. If we, we need to find ways to streamline this stuff. We need to find ways to make sure that these things work. We need to find ways to increase access at every single level and provide as much information as we can. I think that this issue could've been solved if a quick memo was just put together and put out to the public in a press release and people would've just have known instead of waiting days, because how rumors fester is that days upon days of no real feedback or information and people start coming to conclusions and start hearing things, that's the problem, we need more rapid communication. If a memo went out, as soon as all this stuff started coming out, if we would've just put a memo out and said, hey, just so you know, this is what's going on, this may have been ordered differently or incorrectly or, or not in a way that's very readable, we're gonna come out and address it, please be patient with us. I think the people of Espinola would've been patient and said, okay, okay, I see what's going on, let's hear and see what's up. But, you know, that's the problem that just continually happens, is that we get upset with social media, we get upset with how people talk about things, but we are not communicating enough to dispel any of the frustrations that we have here behind these diocese. We need to be more open and more communicative, we should be overly communicative. If we are, if people are sick of hearing from us, it's better than if to let their minds wander and come up with new news. So, I hope that in the future, we could have some rapid response.
I would like to have the opportunity to provide that in the future, to be able to explain before assumptions are made as well. I think that would be unfair of my department to not be able to have the opportunity to explain the information that's submitted and to actually provide a viable information to what the report really is about.
Does anyone else have any comments from the governing body?
I think it's time that we hear from the public.
Well, hold on a minute, I have one last comment. I'd like to thank you all for coming this evening to discuss a very critical issue going on in our community. We all know the unhoused and unsheltered populations is a situation severely crippling our community. Espinola unfortunately is looked at right now as one of the top communities in the state for a size per capita of unhoused and unsheltered population in the entire state. But, almost this is affecting every single community in the state and the United States. It's an issue that is perpetuating, and I don't know, folks, I don't know what happens on the hill. But Taos, Las Vegas, Santa Fe are riddled with this problem. Unfortunately, we have it highest per capita by based on our city population. Hundred and six people can't come together and a hundred and six mayors are consistently asking, what can we do? Right now, the legislature has been passing aggressive, hopefully aggressive, public safety reform bills. We have a dedicated legislative team, the chief of police, myself, the city manager, the clerk, we were yesterday testifying regarding serious crime bill issues in our communities and what's impacting us. We are going to work towards an effort to how we work together for the benefit of all of us, unhoused and unsheltered population. I was just out in the community today visiting with a business owner, consistent traffic up and down Riverside Drive. Riverside Drive has unfortunately evolved into the Las Vegas strip for the amount of people that are walking up and down Riverside Drive. This is a problem that is permeated by our rampant drug problem that has affected our valley for the last fifty years. You have grandparents raising grandchildren and unfortunately their parents are addicted to drugs. And unfortunately now those children are falling into the same fight. We have a serious issue here and like councillor Valdez said it best, not in my backyard. But consistently, we are asking for solutions and answers of how we can do better. But we can do better, folks, by not just saying, let's get them out of here, that is completely irrational. And it's very important that you all understand that. Getting them out of here is, is the, I mean, that could be so many things, but that's not a rational answer. We're trying to do every single aspect we can for the community, this is one avenue that's being discussed and these are things that we need to talk about. There are discussions that may not be the best discussion, but they're discussions that need to be had in our community. So, I'm so grateful for all of you to be here this evening to conduct and organize yourselves in this discussion and as well as coming out in a, in a great amount. Before I yield to the city manager, I just wanna thank you, Michelle, for what you do in our community, for coming up with solutions rather than saying, let's get them out of here, because that's not rational. And if you can come up with a solution for homelessness, Michelle, I'm sure that every city across the state would be investing in you with trillions of dollars. I know that I have so many counterparts across the state that, that would love to bring you aboard. But unfortunately, this is ground zero for the unsheltered and unhoused population in the state of New Mexico for a population of our size. Coupled with that is a budget that has not changed in twenty years, folks. Albuquerque and Santa Fe have budgets ten, twenty times larger than us. And we are crippling with the same, if not, I'd say a little less, population of homeless and unsheltered population that those communities have. So, Michelle, thank you for the work that you do, your dedication and your diligence. Mr. DuHahn.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Protem Councillors. You know, as you think about this, I've been following on it the last couple of days since you came to my pitch on Saturday evening. I did sit in on a meeting that was attended by myself, by GST director, social service director, Peckham Valley and the city attorney. And it's all preliminary, everything she's discussing is all preliminary. I sat there, I listened, I listened and direction had to be set because it is a civic property with this proposed app. And so, you have to run an R, you know, you have to offer a, say, well, I still wanna be involved in this, right? That's all the legalities under the city attorney was present. And that's going for the planning commission because it's a permitted process. And, to my knowledge, and, and not to anybody's defense, not even my own, but as far as appellate homes being donated by the city of Santa Fe, I was in the dark on that. I had no knowledge of that, I was not informed about that. I guess it just happened recently, so, I wasn't briefed on it, I had no knowledge of it. But that is something that this community, and Yama, we visited Yama, come before this council before and before the, before councillor Reddies's committee. And we agree with that, we're not gonna place the homeless like that. We're not gonna put them on a property or anything such as that. In appellate homes or anything like that. The city of Santa Fe wants to do that, think about that, a trial basis like that is, really, it doesn't work. Really, okay, sixty days, we're letting you eat these appellate homes for sixty days and pop away out. No, it doesn't work like that, that's not something that we're interested in. If we're gonna do that, we'll go after our own money. To put something like that, it'd be approved by discovery body, vended by councillor Reddies's committee. And that also leads to the fact that anything that would do that as it pertains to transitional housing, that would also be vended by her committee. So, it's, it's a process, it's not something that discovery body, you know, would address now. You know, it has its own processes that it has to take. And we, we deal with it, I know the transparency of it being done to discovery body, I take full responsibility for because I should've informed Yana, I did inform American Union and I have with, with Peckham Valley, and I need to include the city, the city attorney, but it's all preliminary. It would've been vended by councillor Reddies's committee, it goes that process. Where you have that, you have an open discussion to come out and say what you need to say, you oppose it, you like it, not in my backyard, whatever. That's, that's your right to do that. And, you know, tonight is pretty much misguided because it's nothing that Discovery Body is adhering to. It's nothing that Discovery Body is listening to tonight, it's not an agenda item. It's got a long process that we even started. But I like, you know, the discussion I had with, with Councilor Valdez earlier this evening before the council meeting started when he came into my office to express, you know, when people would see him in restaurants twenty some years ago and say, you're putting that sewer plant, blah, 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 you know, it's gonna steep up the town, whatever. But here, there it is. And his decision he made, just like he said, when you go to the bathroom, where is it gonna go? It's gotta go somewhere, right? The same thing here. We've gotta do something for the people of Espanola. These are just the people, you know, to my knowledge, and I've been briefed on is the people that are not from Espanola, we're taking them out of Espanola. And we're working that through pathways, we're working it through Michelle, the different programs, we're setting them back where they're from. Whether it be Albuquerque, Santa Fe, Roswell, Los Angeles, Las Cruces, I don't care, they're going back to where they're from, Texas, California, wherever. But we do have people here that are also homeless. We have the problems with Pecos, where we're doing San Juan and Santa Clara, both of them, where they also have the same issues. But we have two new governors there that we are working very closely with to help resolve these issues. So it, it's, it's great that you hear that you're concerned. Your concerns don't go far and get years. But it's also a process. And that's what we work on. We just don't stand up things and say, here, you're gonna take it, if you like it or not. No, it doesn't work that way. And, and, and I'll follow up more to Councilor, uh, Sana Satores system. You know, usually I, I don't get the, the, the directors' reports. Uh, because they're usually the same thing, just different numbers. And this will kind of bound up me to go to the clerk. And the clerk looks through them and then they go on to the councilors. It's part of the packet. So when it came to me and the mayor says, well, yes, we do have an issue here, yes. But it's a misinterpretation because it's just something that we're trying to address. That through the three town hall meetings that I did a part of, that I've been concerning the homeless. Concerning the homeless, it's action that we have to take because you can just say, do something. What are we gonna do about them walking our streets, as the mayor said, just like Fremont Avenue in Las Vegas, just walking up and down Riverside? But she's trying to work, but she's trying to get a place to rehab, she's trying to get back to where they're from. She's trying to work with, she, she just placed nine of them to work at Walmart. And then this is the positive thing that should be in her report, the positive things that this community needs to see that we are addressing the homeless issue. It's not the best way, it's not the best result. We don't have billions of dollars like the city of Houston does. But they pretty much answered a lot of the questions. But it takes that kind of a budget. I have my, my, my economic development director working to bring businesses here. So do you don't, do you don't think that I don't wanna see those people walking the streets as well? To say that, that we can't get them out, that we can't get them into rehab, that we can't get them into transitional housing, to get them into a better life? That we all deserve, as is biblically stated by Councilor Valdez so beautifully. But we have to work together as a community. Like Councilor Toya said, the solutions, come to us with solutions, we will listen, we'll work our best way to solve the problems. That's how a community should work by coming together. That's what the town hall meeting was about. That's what she listened to. I was there at that town hall meeting. That's what we listened to. Issues, homeless, resolved. That's what we're trying to do here.
Thank you, Mr. Duhan. I, I also wanted to add a little bit further on that. Been spending a lot of time with our legislative delegation recently. And legislative delegation in collaboration with the governor's office is working strongly to work towards a behavioral health master plan for our community. And we'll be hoping that the city will be moving forward after the legislative session. But the legislative delegation of Susan, Representative Susan Edera, Senator Leo Jaramillo, Representative Andrea Romero, and Representative Christine Chander, Representative Tara Lahn are committed to working together to get us the funding for a behavioral health master plan for our community. And this will be one of the biggest plans for behavioral health for our rural community in the state of New Mexico. And so unfortunately, we're moving in a groundbreaking effort in that aspect. But we ask for you to work with us. We understand and understand the plight of the community and our staff does consistently. And I don't think there's a single member of this governing body that doesn't go out every day and hear a concern or a gripe regarding unhoused and unsheltered population in our community. Without further ado, I'm gonna allow a clerk to take over for public comment. Madam municipal court, Garcia.
Yes, we're on the matter of reports now. So if there's any questions or directors, just stand there. Most of my directors are here. Mayor, if there's any questions, begin to, any reporters, whether they're in fact, or the directors that you're, or just.
That's correct. Counselor Ladue.
Is Chief Garcia still here? Oh, Chief Garcia, um, I wanted to know the, uh, the status on the frozen positions in your departments. I know that we said that we would be trying to unfreeze them a month after the budget passed.
So I just want to hear, if I can.
Yeah, I think there's more of a question though.
Chief Garcia, uh, Mr. Duhan.
If, if Patrick, what is that?
He, Chief Garcia, you can address it. I know he's here because he's got some actual items.
Honorable Mayor, Mayor Protem, governing body, if I can say, currently we're at approximately, uh, we're at twenty-eight. We're testing one tomorrow. We're testing another one on Thursday. So hopefully with that being said, we will be at thirty. Um, I think as far as the frozen positions, I defer to the finance department on that.
So then the answer is yes, they went unbroken, correct?
Madam Protem, as far as I know, they have not.
I believe that would be a, is possible.
I believe they've budgeted uncorrect for thirty-two. Was it thirty-two, Mayor? Uncorrect, it's for thirty-two officers. So you're in the process of hiring two additional officers, Chief? That would be thirty.
Yes.
You're indicating, well, what the Council of Do is indicated, you have frozen positions. And to my understanding, then that would be, oh, here comes Mr. Varela. Mr. Patrick Varela. I'll, I'll reiterate the question.
Sorry, Counselor Ladue.
Mr. Varela, the question that was posed by Counselor Ladue was regarding the budget and the unfreezing of the positions of the police department, which would then total thirty-two full-time certified officers in the police department. And that was the question posed. If that, if there was the unfreezing of those two positions, additional two positions in the police department budget.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Counselor Ladue, the last, the financial director, Moya, told me they were still frozen. There were, we're still trying to figure out where to move some of the money to. There was some positions that were, were put on ahead of time. So we're having to see if we can reallocate some of those funds to cover that.
Okay. And then just one more question for the chief.
Counselor Ladue, make sure your mic's close to.
Oh, I'm sorry about that. And one more question for the chief. Um, I wanted to know, is, if there's a specific reasoning why we're not sending more cases to the municipal court? I just want to try to figure this out because when I, I've had conversations with Judge Madrid. And I'm trying to figure out like a lot of the, what happens in like a lot of cleanup programs and, uh, and stuff with community service. And he informed me that there just isn't enough people to be in charge of misdemeanors being sent to his court that would justify trying to start those cleanup programs again. So I just wanted to hear what you have to say about that.
Honorable Mayor, Mayor Protem, uh, Counselor Ladue, governing body, um, be honest with you, on average, there's nights that my officers are arresting five to seven misdemeanor arrests. Um, we haven't, we take them to courts. Uh, the only court that takes them, our misdemeanors, is municipal court. We've talked about this before. Rio Reba will not take them. Uh, Taos will not take our prisoners. Neither will Santa Fe. Uh, we do take them to municipal court. Uh, I can bring up the number of misdemeanor arrests that we did yearly. I believe it's on my year end. Uh, I think it was like twenty-five hundred that we arrested. Once we arrest them and they're taken, served for adjudication, it's beyond our control. So I can't tell you exactly what happens after we address that. But I do know that on average, and I could give you actual numbers for twenty-twenty-five, is to the number of misdemeanor arrests that we make.
Thank you. If you could send me, uh, that, that would be quite appreciated.
Yes.
Mayor Protem, thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, thank you, Counselor Ladue, for your concern with this situation. Uh, I'm not sure that everybody remembers it the way I remember it, and if don't, please say you don't. Uh, at the time that the budget was happening, we froze the two positions in an effort to balance the budget. With the understanding that as soon as the budget was balanced, those positions would come back into play. If, if I'm mistaken, please tell me I'm mistaken. So once, in my mind, once we send, uh, the state the budget that was approved by Discovery Body, those positions should have become available immediately. They weren't budgeted. So if, if for some reason those two positions did not go in the budget to the state, then I need to know why, one. And two, if they were not, then we need to sit down during examination of the quarter, the next quarter that's coming and figure out what cuts we're gonna make to make sure that those two positions are available to that department. Concerning, uh, what is going on with the misdemeanors getting sent to municipal court, can you tell me where we filed DWI, sir?
Um, honorable Mayor Protem, governing body, uh, all misdemeanor DWIs, unless they're a felony, are filed in municipal court. The only misdemeanors that go to magistrate court for the Espanola Police Department are domestic violence arrests and our felony DWI.
Felony DWI would be anybody that refuses a breathalyzer that would be a felony DWI?
Uh, Madam Protem, it'd be a fourth and subsequent arrest.
And fourth and subsequent arrest. That's it?
Yes, ma'am.
So do you think not, not getting a breathalyzer and fourth arrest for DWI?
Uh, no, ma'am, it would be a fourth arrest or subsequent. So they have to have at least four arrests.
Before it becomes a felony?
Before it's charged felony and then we can go to magistrate court.
Okay. Uh, I really feel like it's important for the wishes of the judiciary body, which is this council, to be heeded when it comes to what our intention was when we froze the position. I, I feel like if we're not doing that, then what's the purpose of holding on to that budget? So I really feel like everybody here feels that public safety is a priority. And we want the department as staff as monetarily possible. So we need to look at the hot situation with why those have not come in yet, if they were not budgeted, if the money's not there. We need to figure out where we cut for the next quarter to make sure that we're, we're handling this situation. So that's what I feel about that. Thank you for your time.
Chief, if you were able to fill those additional two positions with additional testing person, that'll be the biggest PD's been in, what, fifteen years?
Honorable, honorable Mayor, yes, it would be. We'd finally be at that number that we honestly never been able to achieve. Um, I think our department is, has, has a pretty good reputation now. And people are applying from not only locals, which I'm very happy for, but from our surrounding areas.
I want to commend you, Chief. I know when you started off, you started off with twenty-two officers or twenty-three officers at first, and that was not including yourself.
Yes, sir.
Also, Mayor, I think it's important to recognize HR has set up a different way of replenishing officers that leave and that we're testing monthly or bi-monthly or bi, uh, every two months for officers in the city of Espanola to, just in case somebody does leave. So I think that progressive attitude about we hire, get people in, in here in those positions is very, very important because unfortunately, officers do leave. It, it's one of those things where they, they sometimes jump around to different departments. And unfortunately, that does happen. But we want to make sure to keep that department as staffed as possible. And I know that Discovery Body in its total is committed to making sure that that happens.
I, I also want to commend the chief. He's been working diligently to secure new police cars because we have so many officers now, more compared to what we had in the past, that he's had to find and secure additional patrol vehicles for these officers. Uh, the chief's goal and hope ultimately with our budget and because of our size of our city, the chief believes and has said consistently, size right numbers in our community should be at least forty officers. Nineteen years ago, this town had forty-five officers when groceries were still taxed in the state of New Mexico. So I applaud you, Chief, for your efforts for retaining and recruitment of officers in the police department.
Thank you.
Does anyone else have any questions for the chief of police? Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Mr. Varela.
Honorable Mayor, if I could ask, I know Mayor Protem and I, we do have guests that have a, a quick, a presentation for our city council.
Chief, Chief, uh, you're talking about the overdose addiction? Yeah, um, we're gonna do that later after public comment.
That's totally right. Any other questions for the directors?
I, I want to recognize somebody, please.
Mayor Protem.
I want to recognize, uh, Streets or whoever is responsible for the new lighting at the park, Jeff. Elijah, you guys have been a great job of, so the lighting is incredible. The park looks unbelievable.
Playground equipment is going up.
The playground equipment is going up. Ovento, when it's fit, is amazing. When it's fit, it's hit or miss. We don't know if those lights are on or not. But thank you guys for, for that, the, the replacement of those lights in that park have made a significant difference. And know this, that in lightness, good things happen, and in darkness, bad things happen. So the fact that those lights are on and it makes the whole area look a lot better and a little lot safer. So I appreciate the work you're doing. Uh, Mr. Sergeant, Mr. Elijah and your staff, I really appreciate you.
I also want to give the time to acknowledge and thank the city manager, myself, and everyone working diligently to secure additional funding for roads. And I want to thank Elijah and Daniel for all their work. They've been working to secure some quotes. So that we have quotes in hand when we're going to legislators about doing some roadway improvements as well in our community. So thank you, Daniel and Elijah. You had a quick turnaround of getting those quotes for us and we appreciate that. And we look forward to paving a lot of roads here in town in the summer.
Mayor, a positive note is, are there sunny backs, no? No, not for Shannon. No, I just want to say, Mayor, that in the last month and a half that we have increased our employee, uh, people, and we're up to this last month that have thirteen people last month. Those that, that we fired, that started. Of course, Mr. Varela, everyone, this gentleman here in the corner is now working for, uh, for, for Michelle in Social Services. And Mayor Ture, Mayor Ture's here as well. But we're fully staffed as a librarian.
A librarian?
Who's a librarian? There he is. He's standing there, a librarian. Uh, David, he went up, dressed up, over body, on that, on the body. Uh, he's our new librarian. Um, I believe we hired a lifeguard, uh, counselor, we did use as part of this. Thank you, counselor. Great selection, behind you stand so far. And so we are increasing our employment and we're getting more coming to work for the city of Espanola. Despite the negativity that goes on in social media, people are coming to work for us and, and it's, it's a positive move. And so we do offer a great, it's a great job. So, uh, I, I wanted to talk about that, but that is a positive thing. And yes, man, the legislative team, uh, we have in-house, which consists of Mr. Varela, Mr. Sergeant, certainly Chief Bruggerchad. And where's the leader of these groups? Where's my guy? And of course, this is the team that we have established. I have the boss lady at the team. But, uh, so it's, it's, we've been very, very active there in the legislative process. Uh, the mayor's gone several times, for example. Oh, yes, uh.
And, and we'll talk about that during the council comment.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, and, uh, but yes, so, um, and it's been a very productive session, Chris, for now, because the last two years, the city's been stagnant at two point five, two point five. And that's it out of cap fully. This year, I want to see more because the state has more. They have more to give. And that's why the mayor got active and went in with our local legislators to increase so we can pave more roads in the community. So we can be, uh, a more presence because eighty thousand people try to, threaten this. So we can be a more presence because eighty thousand people try to threaten this city every day, whether it's really forty-eight, five, sixty-eight, whatever. And this is what the culture's like. So this is a positive thing. We need to grow some Alcindor, 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 Alcindor. Silpiewe, Orriamila Montes, Hoya, and East Pueblo, that's right. And so, and with the economic dominance, as I mentioned earlier, we're trying to bring to this community so we can increase our GRTs. We're also working on legislation that would help us to increase our GRTs, to be gaining profits. A lot of positive things that we're working on, and it's, it's good to see that, that we are active in the Capitol and then and in the roundhouse and the legislators and people appreciate that. So we are working hard to be more of this community.
Mayor, if you'll indulge me for just two seconds, if we can get along with public comments, then we do have, we do have council comments and matters from the mayor, stuff like that down the agenda, so we can address all this. Then let's take care of the public, please.
Yeah, I had that. Thank you, the council. Madam, would you, for public comment, like, for presentation for public comment?
Yes, Mayor. Since we have several people that have signed up today, those wishing to provide comments, please make sure that you sign in with your legal first and last name and any other information that's requested in the sign-in sheet. You will be allowed to provide comment for three minutes. Once you have been told that your three minutes are up, please be respectful and cease your commentary. When you have called up to speak, please come up to the table here in the front and pull the microphone closer so that everyone can hear.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Donna Casalos.
We need your address, fourteen thirty-seven, Ayatollahs.
Honorable mayor, Madam Protemp, and members of the board. We're good. Okay. Honorable mayor, Madam Protemp, and members of the board. I come to you as a community member. I live in Elano. I come to you as a small business owner. I'm a State Farm agent. And I come to you as an insurance agent, not only for myself, but also my customers. Because if this does take place, and these are things that we have to take into consideration, is with the homeless population, the unhoused comes property crime. And unfortunately, in the insurance market that we're in right now, rates increase if people actually file claims. So I think that's something that gets missed all along the board. Is that individuals that work hard, that actually contribute to the community, and actually benefit, that actually try to benefit and help this community, those are the ones that get affected. And I think we forget, yes, everybody has issues, but at the end of the day, we have been taught since we were kids that using drugs, all of that is a personal choice. These are personal choices that people are making, and I sympathize with that. But at the end of the day, those are their decisions. Now, I don't want to go down the soapbox too far, but in looking at the agenda and the information that was in the packet, and the, my background, I actually was the social services director for La Salamos County. So I understand how government works. I understand that in this case, if this was La Salamos County, which we're not, we'd have a rogue social services director who does not know how to follow chain of command. She mentioned during her comments that she went to the legislative to ask for money. You can't do that without your guys' support. So that just puts you guys in a predicament if you guys actually get funding, because you didn't approve anything. So she just put you guys into this corner. Now, she stated that there's no proposal, there's no, no information, this is all preliminary. On the top, it says proposal. This is a proposal, black and white. Not only does it state that there's twenty, it's to house twenty-five unhoused individuals. Five of the homes are specifically for veterans of the community. She also mentioned that this project is to be used for the crisis center. Nowhere in this proposal, not, uh, it, does it state anything about the crisis center usage. There's also a budget that's included in here for eight hundred thousand dollars, almost, and then every year, it's one point two min, one point two million dollars. So again.
You have your three minutes, are we?
Thank you.
We're done. We finished. I mean, chief, you guys stood up there for two hours complimenting each other. Please finish.
Ladies and gentlemen, the rules of the house where you get in here, it's limited to three-minute commentary.
Is there boldness? At this point, I could stay from talking, but if I could give my three minutes to Ms. Casalos?
Yes.
Carla Martinez, they gave it to the end. There's people that signed in in order.
But she was next to order.
There's the third person, there's the third person also yoke that, and there's the fourth person, and there's the fifth person.
How about we get to them?
Well, let's let them go back. We'll go back.
However, if I would have spoke, it would have been three extra minutes. They would have had to wait it. I said, waiting for speaking, giving the three minutes to Ms. Casalos.
We'll go back to Ms. Casalos because we're gonna put it at the bottom. Put this, go to the third person, Ms. Martinez.
Could have called this, but you didn't speak.
No, so go to the third person.
Steve, I'm sorry, my whole first and last statement was still like this.
Under the constitution, like I said before.
Can we either play by the rules?
You gotta play by the constitution. Just let me.
Madam Clerk.
No.
So back, so back on. We're gonna do this again? The mayor, the mayor said that I'm allowed to. So the mayor.
We start the rules for everybody. You can play by the rules, like everybody out, or you can have to.
Madam Clerk, it's just allowing, Mr. Muck, start the clock for Mr. Loma.
Back in February of twenty twenty-four, Eric had a task force. And that task force, there is an agenda printed, printed, black and white. I want to let everybody know, I have nothing against the unhoused. I support the unhoused one hundred percent, and I do that throughout the nation. But when this government people like to do things backdoor and don't let the public know, and they want to assume like they don't know anything what's going on, but when we read it out on social media, they say it's lies, don't believe it, it's bullshit, this and that, it's not, because it's not true. What they're doing to you guys, it's a bunch of work salad, and they don't want to take blame. Anyways, back in February, Eric Lujan had a task force, and they had a meeting. And at this meeting, somebody from Chamita was gonna donate property, was gonna donate a piece of property in Chamita to, to move, to remove the encampment and have it relocated in Chamita. I exposed that, and I got in contact with the people in Chamita. The community of Chamita came together. Back on September, the middle, the end of August, the beginning, the middle of September, they brought up that they're gonna relocate the homeless from there, and they're gonna put them over there behind the crisis center in Elano. Eric and the rest of these people, Felicia, Nane, Denise were here for that meeting. And this guy had the balls to tell people, I don't see him here, had the balls to tell people, lights to their face that they're not talking about taking them to Elano or putting them back where I put it at. But as everyone here can see, a black-on-white paper, it's stating that it's gonna be behind the, the Women's Crisis Center. That's a bunch of bullshit. Everybody's here just trying to cover up for one another. If you want to feel, if you want to be listening to what they have to say, then that's fine. But fuck you, Eric, fuck you, Patrick, welcome to Espanola, buddy. Now that you work for Espanola, I know that. Peggy Sue, you're a dumb cunt. John, you're a fucking idiot. Carla, go fuck yourself.
Ms. Martinez, the next person.
Joe Copsia.
Eighteen, eighteen, Shadowwood Lane. Thank you for this opportunity to talk. I just basically want to voice my opinion. I am a lifelong resident of Santa Fe County, living in the Elano area. I am opposed to this pie-in-the-sky proposal, whatever. I understand that everyone has best intentions. We need to do something. But my feelings are that this is not, uh, our taxpayer money should not be used for this. There's charities that we all are more than happy to donate to that do a much more efficient job than government does. I basically feel that it's outrageous that you guys picked the furthest corner in Espanola to propose this, furthest away from the police department, from the fire department. You're picking Elano Road, which has no sidewalks, no, no lighting, and these people that are homeless, you know, tend to walk the streets. I can't tell you how many times driving home on Elano, I almost hit people. I just wanted to come here and express my, my disapproval for this. Thank you.
Merrill, stand up.
So I've got a few issues with a lot of stuff that was set up here today. A lot of you guys are saying that you're listening to your constituents, that you, that you're trying to do what the constituents want, but you guys are doing nothing. We had a meeting last time. We all said that we don't want this. Now, the mayor himself is saying that kicking him out is not a viability, but if we don't bring him in here, then we don't have the problem. You guys are allowing him to come in here. The city manager's saying that we're kicking out people that are not from Espanola, who are not, because they're walking all over the streets, they're up and down all over the road. Mr. Valdez, I've gone to the same church as Mr. Valdez for many years. And he's saying that the Bible says, hey, we need to look out for one another. But the Lord himself ain't gonna come down here and, and help people unless you help yourself. So if we're not, we're gonna only help whoever wants to help themselves. These other people are out here stealing, robbing, drugs all over the place, and it's a problem because we're, we're taking in other people's homeless. So if you guys are getting funding and, and, uh, help from other communities, make sure that it doesn't come with a catch that, hey, you gotta take some of our people too, because that's what's happening. All we're doing is taking other people's problems. Don't shake your head, because you can walk through town, none of those people are from here. We had a small homeless problem. Now we've got a major problem. Now we've got an issue that people are walking all over the streets all night long. My cameras are going off. You know, we got issues that do not belong to us, because you're allowing them to get, come in here. The city needs, you guys are here to represent us. You're not here to represent your own thoughts or your own, the people are here telling you, we don't want it. And you guys are not listening. And you guys need to understand that we're gonna vote your asses out. If you guys aren't gonna do what we said, we need to get you out of there, because this is what we want. We don't want people in here just bringing in other homeless people, other homeless problems, saying, hey, we'll give you funding if you take our problems. We don't want that problem. We don't want their funding. We don't want to be paying for, for stuff that we don't agree with. People that want help, then let them get drug tested, and we'll, we'll help them. I have to get a drug test for work. People out here got to get a drug test for work. If we're not gonna drug test the ones that need help, well, all we're doing is helping them get drugs. That's it. We're not helping nobody, do nothing. All we're helping is the homeless problem by you guys allowing them to come into our, our city, bringing other people from our cities and leaving them here. If Darren's place is bringing in people, and they don't meet the criteria for them to stay in the, in the house, and they kick them out, where do they go? They don't send them back. They don't bus them back to where they came from. They turn them loose on our streets, and now we got shoplifters every day. Our prices are going up because the shoplifting is running rampant. All this stuff is not what you guys are not paying attention to. You guys are, our people are here telling you, we don't want this. And you guys are just making up your own little minds, saying, hey, let's do whatever we want. Your people don't want this. You guys need to understand that. So there's a lot of stuff, Ms. Michelle over here saying that it was for the.
Three minutes, are we up, sir?
All right.
Inez Frenzio.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Protemp. Thank you, Ms. Martine, and the rest of the city council. My, my focus was, again, to come in and protest against the pellet homes, because I didn't hear enough about it. And I am concerned just as many people are because of the traffic in that area. The crisis center is not, in my opinion, is not the place to put something like this, because they are going through tra, trauma as it is, and they don't need something else, you know, such as the, the pellet homes and so forth in there. The one thing that really concerns me is the high school. We need to really consider the high school, and we really shouldn't even be talking about pellet homes. I think we should be talking about the root cause of the problem, which again, is a drug addiction. You know, and where do we start to inform, to educate our children so that they don't follow that same path of their parents or grandparents? There are so many students out there that don't have any support. I'd like to see the city council invite the school boards from the surrounding communities to come in and address this issue and join with you so that we can get this resolved. I mean, we're not gonna get it a hundred percent. We're not. But at least it's a starting point for those children out there. Okay? I'd like to say one of the things that we could probably do to help streamline some of this trash and everything else out there that's being caused by the homelessness is hold them accountable. You go down State Road seventy-six, and it is a mess. If you're not running over them, you're running over bas, uh, shopping carts or over sleeping bags or over piles of clothes. So why do we need to pick it up? Did we make that mess? We didn't. They did. So how come we're not holding them accountable for it? You know, Mr. Marcus, may he rest in peace, he had a wonderful program. Why can't you take some of this funding and hire a couple of people to do that? To take them and say, you threw this, you live here, you pick it up, you clean it up. Putting a pellet home for them is not gonna help, because it's gonna be a disaster for, for somebody to clean it up. You know, somebody talked about the feces and so forth? Oh, yeah. Take a look at the union hall. Take a look at wherever they have their methadone clinic and so forth. It's a mess. So I think we need to address the root cause of these problems. And just like, I can't remember his name, the woman that spoke before me. It is a problem, and we are seeing people that don't belong here, that aren't from our community. You know, the first thing that went through my head is, if Santa Fe County is doing this, they're gonna ship all of their homeless to us. Thank you.
Mathieu Casalos.
Honorable bear, Mayor Protemp, councilors, good evening. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. A lot of folks have already spoken, and I'm not gonna recover that, but I am gonna start off where Donna left off, which is on the budget. And this is huge. You're talking even as a pilot program of nine hundred and twenty thousand in the program on a yearly basis. You're talking three to five million to cover this as a one-year setup, and you're talking at least one point two million in o, other coverages and costs to go through on a yearly basis from that time forward. The fact that it went to the legislative body actually did set you guys up. And you should be, you should have been aware of that, because there is protocol and everything that goes along with it, and that could come back to hurt us in future endeavors, asking for other monies. Now, there's been a lot of talk here about community. There's different ways to look at community. There's community in faith. There's community within the homeless population themselves. But what we're talking about today is the community of the residents in the Elano area, and whether or not they were given the appropriate information to make good decisions. And we already know, you guys admitted to it, we were not. If you want solutions, there are processes. Project management's very easy, right? Start date, end date, communication plan, and everything that goes with it. None of that happened here. This is a proposal. In this proposal, it talks about zoning and how this area meets the zoning code. Quote-unquote, "I'm writing to formally request approval for the placement of a modular sober living home, and I'll let the rest go." Same thing for the budget. Over here, we talk about not in my backyard. It can happen in somebody's backyard if those people are engaged and actually know what are going on. This is miscommunication. You're never gonna get people on your side unless they know that. And we, again, already know that didn't happen. There was a lot of discussion here. There was a lot of discussion here going into the accolades of what's going on with the social services versus the issues. I'm not here to dispute that. There's plenty of accolades that go along, but this is the wrong place to discuss the accolades when you have an angry community that is coming at you, saying, guys, we don't care what you've done, we care what you're doing. At those meetings that you were talking about, community meetings, there was also talking about other things besides homelessness. Public safety was high on the list. Youth activities and how we deal with them is on the list, and those are things that we need to do. If we wanna break this chain, we need to be able to focus on things that are causal and not just being retroactive on everything that's going on. We need to be proactive, and that's why we have become part of this cycle, because we're constantly being retroactive, trying to fix everything instead of putting programs in place to stop it before it happens. I would ask you guys to take a look. Thank you for your time.
Hello, Honorable Mayor and City Council. Thank you for listening to me. Being a person that has been born and raised here, I am 10 years sober now. I've been in this community, and we literally had nothing when I was my addiction, like, literally nothing. And to see how much it's grown, I am very proud of it. I am very, I acknowledge every place that we've had, every treatment center, and yes, like, I'm just so glad we have moved that forward. But again, I do feel our homelessness and everything is just judged wrongly and everything. I was one of those people. I was literally one of those people on the street, and if I would've had someone who cared for me more, I'm sure I would've changed sooner. I've been picked up by EMTs when I OD'd, and I got treated horribly. I've been picked up by policemen where I got and called messed up names and saying that I'm just another one. I want us to be here to change this stigma and show people that we are just people too. You know, I'm a therapist now, and I love helping people. I love being that impact in people's lives, and I love that my family is very proud of the person I am today. I am a counselor there at Pickles Valley Counseling, and if I would've had a program like that here in Espanola, man, I would've changed so faster. So I'm just saying, yes, I know that homelessness, it's a choice sometimes, but it's not always. Sometimes we're placed in that. Sometimes, yes, when we're raised by parents that are like that, and we're thrown into, it's not our fault. And so I want you people to really see that, because I've humbled my mother's eyes. She used to be seeing people on the streets, and she would say how pathetic and all these messed up words, but since me, I've changed her and I've humbled her. We are a community, and we're a family here, and that's what we need to be. We need to stop judging and picking on people and communicate better. I think that's what we need to really see, is open our eyes. And you know what? I would give anything off my back for someone who is just wanting help, anything, because materialistic things are nothing to me. They are literally nothing, and I'm glad I went through my addiction, because it raised me to the person I am today. And I thank you for all of you who do have the hearts for us. I do thank you, because I know a few of you from this community, and I know you've seen where I've been and where I've come from. So I thank you guys for that, and I pray that we continue growing and we continue connecting and working together, and pellet home or whatever, I wish I would've just had something over my head, you know? I don't care if it's a small little pellet home. I don't care if it's a couch. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, council members. I've lived in the Eliano area now, going on seven years, specifically the Vista de la Rio subdivision. And growing up in Espanola Valley, I can only recall two people that walked the streets. That was Petra and Salabon. Now, I don't even think they were homeless. I think they even had their homes, they had their own homes, and they wanted to, for whatever reason, just walk the streets. For the most part, they were harmless. But in the last, what, four or five years, the homeless epidemic has reached proportions that the city can no longer control it. Now, when I first heard about the pallet village being, proposal being set up in Eliano, that alarmed me, because, mainly because that area cannot simply, cannot simply support that environment. You look at the pathway shelter, that is completely unmanaged. Now, I assume that they do have city permits, zoning requirements. For whatever reason, the city has not enforced those zoning laws or any type of governing of that business. If you look at the wetlands just north of that pathways, it has turned into a virtual dumping ground for the pathway shelter. My concern is if this pallet village or pallet homes are allowed in the Eliano area, the same situation will happen there. It will become a virtual dumping ground for the homeless people. I think everywhere that the city tries to establish a homeless camplet, it turns into chaos. You look at the former campment at the bridge, that was a disaster. The pathway shelter is a disaster, and if it happens in Eliano, that will be another disaster. It seems to me that the city has just rearranged the deck chairs on the Titanic, and there doesn't seem to be any long-range plan. It seems like the city panics, looks for another location to store these people. That doesn't work out, let's move some more else. That's not an efficient way to govern these people. The city simply does not have the infrastructure to support these people. And I know there's comments that said, well, people that who are not from here, we're getting them out. I don't know where those statistics are coming from, because the people I talk to in my line of business, most of them are not from Espanola. Most of them don't even wanna seek any help. They like, for whatever reason, being homeless, because they're ungoverned. They don't need to be told where to go, where to sleep, and so on. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council members. I just wanna, like, oppose the pellet homes. I don't think it's a great idea. You're putting vulnerable people in, they've said that over and over all night, but I also wanted to come and ask you guys, the funds that were mentioned on there, it was a grant, and I just wanted to make sure that being that you mentioned it was sober, that it was not gonna come out of the opiate funds. I noticed that there's $186,000 that was given to the social service department, and I wanna make sure that it goes directly to the victims of this opiate epidemic. I've seen over and over it be used for pensions, it be used for things that it's not supposed to, retention, to pay your police officers, more positions. I kinda question that that's against the anti-donation cause, because it benefits one person rather than the victims in a whole, and also, I just wanted to mention that there's a bill that's in the House right now, 206, what, I mean, 252, it's for kinship and grandparents, and it's through Lano Foundation. I think that you guys should give opiate money to be able to help Lano Foundation, because they support your grandparents. Espanola is not mentioned on that bill of the areas that are gonna be supported, which is devastating to me, because there's tons of people in this area who support their grandparents, but I just wanted to mention that you guys can help. You guys can give money out of the opiate epidemic instead of using it for your guys' self. So I just wanted to bring that up. Is my time up? Okay, so, because I don't know if you guys have seen this agreement, pregnant and postpartum women are part of the agreement, and also expanding treatment for needle-nail abstinence children. That's what our babies are exposed to. So I just wanna make sure that it's used on the victims. I can't stress that over and over. I've seen it given to social service and physicians. I don't think that falls under the agreements, and I would like to know where your attorney approved that, because it's not fair to the people who struggle with substance abuse, because you see all these people out here. What's their biggest problem? Substance abuse. You guys have the money to provide treatment, to provide rehabs, to provide housing for these mother and children, because it says it here. So I don't know where you guys don't have the money to be able to help these people. I often hear that we need to apply for grants, we need to do this, we need to ask legislation for money. Well, where's the money that we have for this opiate epidemic? Why is it not helping the people who are affected? Because you know what? Those people need help to get better, so they can be productive community members, and they're not gonna get better if you guys keep on misusing that money. So I'm here to say this loud and clear. I'm not going away. I'm gonna keep on asking for that money until it's spent on the victims, because that's what it's supposed to be you for. Thank you, guys.
Good evening, everyone. So I first wanna start off with, I am honestly opposed to the pellet homes. We all know why. I did, I remember that meeting where you guys said, bring solutions, and I brought many. I even offered to help out. I was involved in many halfway houses and rehabs back in Illinois. By the way, I've been here for five years as of Sunday, and I still have yet to see animal loss that I've been working on, but that's not about that tonight. But I offered to help figure out ways that we could start halfway houses. Denise, I know you remember, because I called you about it, and we were discussing it, and rehabs. Those are what is needed in this town, because there, I mean, I'm sorry, I live in Cooks, I see addicts all day long. I've had people come up on my porch asking to do yard work just so they could, you know, get some money and things like that, and I, I work in Santa Fe, so unfortunately, I drive verticeide drive, and I've seen people leaning into the road just to pick up a cigarette butt or a penny or whatever's in the road, and almost take, see the car in front of me, take their head off because they're falling into the street. I mean, you know, I have family members that are addicts. I've lost people that are addicts. You know, we have, I'm very good friends with a lovely woman who takes care of her grandchildren because her, you know, their parents were addicts, and unfortunately, her son recently died due to addiction. These are things that are hitting this community, and the only way to clean it up is by getting them to help. Why can't we get, like, a halfway house where after they finish rehab, they have a safe place to land, not a pallet home, but a safe place to land, where they can take a shower on a regular basis anytime they want, they can go to work, they're held accountable at a halfway house as opposed to a pallet home where, you know, it's kind of like a guarded station, is my opinion. My opinion only, nobody else's. But, you know, halfway house will help people a lot more than a pallet home would. Also, I wanna say that I do know at least two of the non-for-profit organizations that were mentioned by Michelle were actually, where they have asked for funding from the city and have never received it. So that is something that I did wanna point out. I will not mention the programs.
Honorable Mayor, Council, I'm also opposed to those portables. I live at 675 Caber Court. And if you guys need a viable solution, Ms. Rodriguez brought up, you guys own that house, it's right there on Fairview and McCurdy. It was a shelter before, it's not yours?
We don't own that, Mr. Viall. We haven't owned that for about 21 years.
Oh, shucks. I thought it belonged to the city.
Actually, Mr. Viall, I shouldn't comment with you, but actually, the same thing when they tried to put it there, it evolved, and that's why they sold it back to the family of Bustos.
Ah, okay. I thought the city owned it. That was gonna be my suggestion to house the overflow, if the city's gonna go with that plan, but like, several people that spoke before me, we are overrun with shopping carts, homeless. You guys passed an ordinance where they can't be in the medians, but now they attack us at the stores, and throwing their junk all over their trash. We have to clean it up. It's terrible. And I know you guys try to do this and that and help them, and you move them from here to there, but we need a bigger solution where you can put them, where you can control them and the shopping carts. Not everybody have the locking shopping carts, and they're in Eliano, they're everywhere. You almost hit them, and they just throw their, they leave their blankets and everything thrown all over our city. And another issue that I had to bring up, if we're going to do that, and you guys are gonna do it, you've got the industrial park, put it up there, put those portables up there, and it's more isolated, there's not them getting run over or us almost hitting them. It's in a safer environment for them to be. And the last comment, before I run out of time, it's for Mr. Ladoo. I would suggest to you to practice what you preach on your comments of being more informative and communicating. Stop being a TikTok bully and a keyboard bully and bad-mouthing our mayor on social media all the time, and making this, in the state and all over the United States, and making Espanola look worse. Instead of using that energy, help them and talk with them to better our city. We already have a black guy. We don't need a bigger black guy. If you're angling to be the mayor, you're going about it the wrong way. You need to do it the right way. You don't need to badmouth it. Second, you went to our church and you went to all churches here for your support to get you elected, and then now you're trying to spearhead tarot card reading, palm reading, all that. We don't need that demonic presence here in our city, and we don't want it, but you wanna bring it in. So if you wanna use your energy and your communication and your keyboard bullying, keep it to yourself. You're a big man, and he's a big man. Go talk to him. You don't need to air your dirty laundry for the whole state and everybody. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Robert Bustos?
We'll go back to him with the, right behind the head there, Valdez, if he's here.
Bertha Youngblood?
Bertha Youngblood?
Good evening. I just wanted to say I'm a client at Pickles Valley. I came in because I was having mental health crisis. I have been hospitalized previously five times for suicidal thoughts. I had lost two children, and it just really, my whole year last year was just getting out of the hospital, and I was, I was referred to Pickles Valley by a counselor at one of the hospitals I was at, and one of the times I was in the hospital, I got really sick and tired of being sick and tired and just wanting to get relief. and tired and just wanting to get relief and out of this life. I prayed, got on my knees and begged to God while I was in the hospital to send me somewhere where I could get spiritual healing because I felt like that's the only thing that's gonna save my life at that point and I didn't want to die and give my kids with the legacy that their mother gave up. So anyway, I went to Pickles Valley in December and Pickles Valley isn't, they don't just give Mr. Travis Shepherd, he don't just give a handout. He wants to build a person, a person from the inside out and he wants to do the whole person treatment, not just bring them in and send them on their way. And we get random drug tests often and we're, he's out, every few days he's wanting updates on how we're doing and how any job search or anything to improve our lives is going. So he, he cares a lot about each and every one of us. While like, he also, it's a faith-based organization, I believe, I'm not. So I have met, every time I've been to the hospital, I didn't get that feeling, but since I've been there, I feel like the Holy Spirit has been over Pickles Valley because I was on so many medications, especially for anxiety, it was driving me crazy, where I would want to hide under the bed and I was taking three a day and they weren't even touching the surface of my anxiety and depression. And within a month of being there, I don't take any of my anxiety medications anymore. And my depression has completely lifted off and my, my self-esteem and my self-worth has, my suicidal thoughts are not even in the picture and we have Bible study every day, like well, four times a day, I mean, four times a week and we have groups every morning, every weekday morning to check in on each other and see how our days, how our morning is.
Your three minutes are up. Nancy Salsino?
Evening, Mayor and City Manager. I just want to say that I feel like we need more programs. I'm 21 years old. I feel like a lot of the things that they're saying about homeless people is not right. I'm willing to, me as not a homeless person anymore, I'm willing to help the homeless people pick up their trash, I'm willing to volunteer to help this community as much as I can. Obviously, I can't do a lot because, you know, but I'm willing to help out. I'm pretty sure that a lot of people at Pickles Valley is also willing to help out because we've been in that situation, you know? I just want to say that we need more places like Pickles Valley because Travis, he's a really good person, he always, he helps us get jobs, he's always having us on our feet and I feel like not all addicts stay addicts, you know, and I feel like that's what a lot of people have confused is that they think that addicts always stay addicts or we choose to be addicts and they have that all wrong. We see it from our parents. So growing up, we see parents doing drugs and abusing us, hitting us, you know, and that makes us use drugs, you know? We don't talk about the sadness, we don't talk about being hurt, we don't talk about depression and anxiety, you know? So I feel like that's what makes us use drugs. And I just feel like we need to lift each other up and stop bringing each other down and I honestly have my faith in God and what God's gonna do for us, you know? I don't care what, how many votes we have, how many people say negative things. I believe in my Lord and I believe that God will make the decision for all of us, you know? And that's all I have to say.
Avraham Bustos?
Hello, everybody. I'm not talking about the homelessness, I'm not talking about, what I've come here to town is I've been coming to this office and asking the mayor and all the people that have come and worked with me on the land laws and stuff like that. And thanks to Eric, City Manager, went to see what was going on, what was happening to my property, how much devastation there is around Rio Vista subdivision. And here I am, six years later, still asking for help. He's the only one that really cared. He went down there and looked, took pictures and he knows what the world looks like up there, how my house and my property's been damaged. Yet I didn't see any of you guys trying to help. Come on, six years, I've been very patient. I've bought, I've come every time and you gave me another person to go look for the, at the property and all that, but you guys never did nothing about it. You didn't, you didn't run that place right. You had no permits, you had no, no one watching them to make sure they were doing the right job. You didn't give them the bike, didn't, you have no power. Instead, you gave it to the cooks. What are you gonna do for me? Are you gonna help me now?
I work for the Espanola Fire Department, I know nothing about the roads, so I can help you as much as I can if your house is on fire, if you need anything, it's call 911, but I don't.
I do, I've called 911 several times. Okay, I've even had police reports when the homeless people are going right through my property and into living right next door in a pile of wood, right there, 16, 18, 20 Caiculera, they're moving in there already, see? And I don't see anything happening for me to fix my property. You guys don't have nothing to say about it?
Mr. Bustos, we can't engage you unfortunately in discussion and dialogue at this time. But Mr. Luan, I strongly, hopefully can you get a meeting with Mr. Bustos this weekend?
I should appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Hey, I'm Montoya.
Good evening, everybody. I just want to come up here and talk a little bit about, you know, the misunderstanding that it seems like we got from social media. But based off of that, what I did was I went into the city website and I tried to find all of the information so that I could like do my due diligence in like regards to whether this was actually happening. And unfortunately, I was unable to. I couldn't find memos, I couldn't find, when I looked at the codes that were mentioned in the letter, none of that was updated. So, you know, going back to what you guys said about the communication, I think that it's really important that that part of the communications that was as citizens, if we're looking to get some information, we're able to find it. But in regards to whether this pallet home is, or these pallet homes are going to be placed in Aliano or not, I do live in Aliano and yes, we can all say, okay, well, not in my backyard. Yes, that is one of those issues that we have. But I think that the other big issue is if it does come down to wanting to have the location there to put these homes. From my understanding and from social media, the property, the property that was mentioned was 577 and 577 is a long stretch out. And from my understanding, that is an old landfill. And so if this is going to be an area that is proposed for moving individuals, I think that morally and ethically that that is not okay because in my perspective and looking at that is we're taking trash and putting it in trash. So, you know, think about that in regards to if that is like the long-term goal of what is going to be taking place in our understanding and based off of the information that we received tonight from, I don't remember any, but if this is already a proposal in place, which it sounds like, that is not concerning for me. So that's all that I have to say, thank you.
Boo, we are not trash.
Ms. Martinez, would you please move forward?
Is there spice?
Mayor, council members, if you'd like to talk. I myself is, I myself am a hard worker. I do pay my taxes and I will tell you right now as a product of Pickles Valley, they do definitely stand up and they encourage us to push forward. The opportunity that is presented or was proposed or whatever's going on, something that can oppose problems, I suppose, but with the right guidance that Travis provided, I believe it's something that we can definitely help progress, I'm gonna like, get it back to where it's a beautiful place again. Thank you guys for your time, sorry.
Danny Sanchez?
Hello, everybody. I'm Danny Sanchez, born and raised here. My family founded Hernandez, the Ortega's, we got a big ranch family. My mom was actually a walker here in this town, Bridget Bendiola, I'm pretty sure the police department dealt with her a lot. She was also an addict, she lost her life on the streets. My baby mama, I have a three-month-old son, she's lost in the streets. So there's a lot of people that are homeless here from here. I don't know where people are getting it twisted, there's a lot of people from out of town, not really, I know the whole community. I'm so blessed to be here at the Pickles Valley Council. I was an addict, an ex-gang member, I gave all that up because of Pickles Valley Council. Michelle and Travis, they're doing a great job, these pallet homes. A lot of people are leaving out the fact that it's not just pallet homes, it's Pickles Council that's gonna be there taking care of all the homeless people, guiding them, helping them get back on their feet, helping them get sobriety in their life, feeding God into them. I'm a big time Christian now, surrendered my life to God. I was a criminal at one time, I was an addict at one time, but I'm giving my life to God and I'm, I'm here to help Espanola get back to the beautiful city that I've known my whole life. That's it.
Jason Berg?
Hello, Mr. Mayor, council members. I don't know if you guys remember me, I was here a few months ago when I spoke on behalf of Pickles Valley. And because Travis, Travis Shepard and staff there, I am a success story. I am, hence my, I am starting work at Walmart this week. They do a lot. They don't just like kick you out in the morning and just let you be by yourself. They actually help guide you through the day and make sure that you stay busy, you do. Putting applications that you're seeking help, you're seeking something better than just going out and doing whatever. They speak at the schools, help the youth so they don't end up how we are. They've done a lot and with everything that's going on and that's being proposed and everything that's like hearing, I'm hearing all this negative stuff because I guess some of these people don't know or have addicts or anything in their family, I don't know what they have going on, but there is a solution, there is a problem that, with this and without Pickles Valley, I don't know where I would be, I don't know where my wife would be right now. We would probably be on the street right now, homeless, with the same problems that are being presented here. But I tell you this right now, I thank God for putting us in Pickles Valley with Travis Shepard and the staff there. Because without God to help guide us, we're all lost, homeless or not. Thank you.
Jesse Bosfield?
It's not her.
Eva Baker?
Mayor and council members, I'm a resident of Ijano. My address is 1950 East Shadowwood Lane. I'm opposed to any kind of housing for the homeless. I do want to say that I do have empathy for them. However, I have probably about eight or nine nephews and nieces addicted on the streets. I helped and tried, but what I've come to is that nobody will get help unless they want to help. You can't force anybody to go. So I think if you had a place for these people to regularly shower, they don't have to live there, but they could at least go maybe something like his place to help the people. I don't think housing them is the answer. And also getting back to Ijano, okay, we have, I think it's maybe five miles, we have a community base, we have the cemetery, we have the domestic women's shelter, we have the high school and we have that city thing there on the corner, I don't know if it's a substation or what it is. And that's like three mile stretch maybe. And we have the high school, don't have to forget the high school. So we propose to put something there at the high school, you're gonna have traffic in the morning from the kids, you're gonna have traffic in the afternoon at three o'clock from the children. Not only do we have traffic and it's dangerous for these people that are walking that windy small road up to Ijano, they have to see the kids going to school every day, somebody fended over on drugs. Not only that, but it's gonna cause a lot of litter. They're gonna have a lot of litter to see the kids. This is our kids that are gonna see that because that's the only school we have in town for high school kids. So we're sending them down a path every single day to see this destruction. We need to help the kids. The kids, the adults kind of are, you know, they're already adults, kind of set in ways. The children need to learn. You guys need to provide some kind of youth activities for these children. We don't have anything, nothing at all. If we have a city swimming pool, it's littered with weeds. If we have a park, it's littered with weeds, drug needles and trash. This is what we are showing our children.
Your three minutes are up. Mr. B. Montoya?
I apologize if I look a little scary, I just got out of work, I was unaware that I was attending the meeting, can we start the time? Hello, Honorable, sorry, I'm nervous, Honorable Mayor and City Council. I am a member of the Pickles Valley House. I apologize to the business owners and to the members of the community, to the council, to the members of the government. If our presence here concerns you, I can see how it can. I just want to let you all know that in order to be considered for the Pickles Valley House, you have to be drug tested and also interviewed by the director who makes sure that you want help for yourself, that you want to be in that home, you want to change. With addition in order to change, you have to want it for yourself. I'm so very thankful to be welcomed into your community. I do work at Wendy's and I've seen most of you at my work. This Pickles, this Pickles Valley home allows me to get back on my feet, begin working in the hospital again. I am a normal person like everybody else, I can I am a normal person like everybody else. I do work more than eight hours, over ten to twelve hours. I was a medical assistant. Couple years ago, my mother got divorced, so my life spiraled out in a groove. But this home helps me to be able to get back on my feet, get back into the hospital and to be helping people. I attend church every Sunday in Catholic church. I am attending classes for confirmation and very, very, very spiritual. I do abide by the laws and I am now a productive member of your community. And I just wanna say that I am so very thankful to be a part of it, to be here, to be able to be doing community service, to be working and to be sober. The home, I just wanna say that everybody in the house has, we have rules. We are drug tested regularly. We go to bed at nine, nine o'clock every night. We have to be home. We don't wanna steal anyone, we don't wanna hurt anybody, we don't wanna litter on the ground. Yes, there are people in town in the house being homeless community and it is bad, but it can get better. We all wanna be here, we all wanna change. And we're in bed by nine P M. We are all very sober, very busy with work. And now, I may mention that we are, the ones that were not working are now working at Walmart and we're so very excited. I just wanna let you all know that it will get better with days. And you all are very emotional and you all care about your community so much and I can see that. But just remember, you are all a team. Your council is a team. Your community, you're all a team. You guys have to work together. I see you guys fighting a little here and there. If you guys just work together, put your differences aside, agree to a decision, come together and make it work. You can do it. I see it. You all care enough.
Three minutes, all right?
And here after, if anybody has more questions about Pickles Valley, it could be missed. It's not a long time. God bless you all. Communication is key. Thank you so much for your help and for your dedication, because it's worth it and you're making a difference.
Robert Bustos? Again, Robert Bustos?
Well, also all the speakers.
Okay, we're gonna yield to Heather Baldanza's spot. Do you still don't wanna speak, Ms. Baldanza? You can yield it to Ms. Casallos. You can come over to Ms. Baldanza's spot for additional three minutes. Thank you for your patience.
Thank you, Mayor Ramon. Thank you for taking, thanks you. So as a continuation, so again, we are not here to deface or say that your guys' sobriety has, that's accomplishment, so take that, accept that. However, going back to what is in your guys' agenda in the director's report, again, going back to city government and knowing the process, in here it states, "The proposed sober living home will be operated by Pickles Valley Counseling, which has been provided community shared living and transitional services for individuals with opioid and substance abuse." Going on, the counseling became a nonprofit organization as of October eighth, twenty twenty-four. Now, the issue that I have with this is that you guys just tainted the RFP process. Because in this, again, black and white, they have been awarded a contract that has not, that has not bowed. RFP process has been tainted at this point. So again, you have a rogue social services director that is doing things that are beyond her scope. So again, as I mentioned earlier, and bringing proposals and ideas, this council has had a historic history of working on historic monuments, the convento, the revitalizing Lucero Center, which is great, that's great. However, your guys' demographic has been skewed. Your guys' focus and demographic on what you guys are working on, who you're trying to help, is the elderly. They're, they're done. We have missed the bar on who we are actually trying to help is our youth. We need programs for our youth. They are the future of our community. They are the future of this city. So we need to actually focus on them and help them. As these individuals mentioned, they have no services. They have no go-to. As a twenty-one-year-old, I mean, you ask what other organizations or what others' communities are doing, they are focusing on their youth. They are putting the money into the youth. As far as, again, resources and solutions, we gave ordinances that could actually help and give to, like actually, like things that the police department can actually put weight behind to actually help combat. We actually put, said, "Let's focus on a jail." That way they have a place to take them because they don't have, they can't take them to Rehner or to Taos or anywhere. So what do they do? It's catch and release. We also put ordinances in place to where if somebody is under substance abuse and they're on the city streets, they can be arrested.
Three minutes, all right?
I'd like to ask to be able to speak just a little bit and I'm not gonna be, I'm not saying anything about the homeless or any of that. You guys asked earlier for suggestions. Yeah, but I was, I worked and I didn't get a chance to come in here.
My name is Tony Senna.
You need an hour, sir, you need an hour to speak, and speaking is important.
My name is Tony Senna. I'm a member of the community. We own businesses. I'm not here to complain about the homeless.
Please, please, please give Mr. Senna the respect he is owed.
I'm not here to complain about the homeless situation. I'm not happy with it, but we're all here to try to figure out a solution. I have, you asked for suggestions earlier and I have a couple of suggestions. I owned a business that I employed people that had come out of the system. I tried to help them. But the city and the state doesn't allow it. I had to quit halfway through the day because one of my workers would get called for a drug test. You guys should know, they should know the schedule of their working. If they got a job, then they should do the drug test after work or before work. But us owners of businesses are trying to help out the community and these poor people that are trying to get on their feet have to quit their job or leave their job in the middle of the day. And how many employers wanna have their employees leave because they have to go to a drug test? It's not fair for them. It's not fair for us. We also, we're sitting here, we're talking about our kids and this is, these people are telling us about the kids. The kids are the ones that need the help. But my son was involved in a youth program, in a basketball AAU program. We couldn't get a gym. All the gyms in Espanola are empty. Nobody's using them, but nobody wants to open them up for the kids. These kids need something to go to. They need somewhere to start their life, somewhere to guide them, people that are there to take care of them and teach them the right way. But if they're out on the street doing whatever the heck they want, because you guys don't allow them to go into the, to the public school gyms or to the, the public areas that belong to us. These are, these places belong to the community. They belong to everyone in here. That's what they should be doing, using it for. Everybody that's out there that's got a program that's for youth, they should be using the city facilities and the county facilities and all the facilities that are available for those kids, because that is our future. Our future is these people that are staying on and I commend you guys. But not all of you guys wanna be in, in the situation you guys are in. I commend the ones that wanna try and wanna do something with their life. That's all we want. But the, the problem is that we're, we're not focused on the kids. We're not focused on the fact that these poor people have to quit their job in the middle of the day to go take a drug test because nobody really gives a shit about what they're, they're doing. They should be able to say, "Okay, do you know what? This is my schedule." And then you do a random drug test against whatever time they have available or talk to the, to the person, the employer. But you can't just expect an employer to say, "Okay, well, you know what? You got shit to do, but because you got a drug test, go ahead and go." That doesn't work for most of the employers. We end up firing them, letting them go. That's not fair to these people. We're here for them. We're here for all our kids. And the schools are not opening up. It's ridiculous that there, there are so many facilities out there available for these kids. Thank you guys very much.
This concludes our comment at this time. Thank you all for signing in this evening. We appreciate your patience, your commitment and your dedication to our community to come and spend the evening with us to express your views and, and share your opinion regarding very important topics in our community. We're gonna be moving on to business with visitors as the overdose detection mapping application program presented by Chief Police Officer Garcia. Okay, go ahead. Ladies and gentlemen, please, if you are exiting the meeting, please do it respectfully. We have, we're continuing the meeting with presenters.
Honorable Mayor, Detective Lieutenant, Attorney for U.S. Department of Defense, and as we've seen tonight, the drug issue in our community has been generational. As a result of that, we worked quite a bit with our public safety committee. We talked about getting some type of statistics for our.
Gentlemen, please, I ask you, please express some respect to the speakers.
In reference to the issue that we have, rather than just be suppressive in nature for the police department, as I've always stated, we try to be preventive and also provide some form of education. With that being said, we have probably one of the most renowned speakers in our, in our state in regards to the, and all the opioid epidemic. He's here, he's feeling all the way from Los Cruces. I, I wish he had, and that awaits a lot, but we don't always pick the nights that we can come to the council. Who I have next to me this evening is Mr. Kevin Wren, who is the Drug Intelligence Officer with the New Mexico HIDA Investigative Support Center. And I'm sure you've all been able to review the PowerPoint that he sent out before. And the information that he has is unbelievable. It's something that can be used by all enforcement agencies, all social service agencies. And it just gives us an indication, and unfortunately, some of the news that he's gonna talk about for our county is gonna be very good. With that being said, I'd like to present our Mr. Dunn with his presentation.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Members of the Council. Thank you for taking the time to allow me to present this information to you all today. Hopefully you'll find it useful and hopefully we can get some, some answers and maybe work together to get some solutions because drug violence is looking our state. Next slide, please. So I encourage work for the New Mexico High Intensity Drug Traffic Area. It is a federal program that is, it is administered out of the Office of National Drug Control Policy, an executive branch of, of the federal government. The mission of the HIDA program is to coordinate and assist federal, state, and local agencies to prevent the flow of drugs into our communities. New Mexico has seventeen designated HIDA communities. Rio River is one of them. Next slide, please. So what does HIDA do? It is involved in a lot of different things. The primary mission is to prevent the flow of drugs into our communities. It does it in a variety of ways. One of the ways is HIDA provides training to law enforcement agencies, generally free of charge. It also has an investigator support center which assists law enforcement agencies with investigation of drug cases. It does also assist with providing funding for investigation prosecution of drug charges, or drug cases. We have a, currently have a prevention coordinator, which is a new, a new directive of the HIDA here in the state of New Mexico. Her name is Monica Trujillo. She was formerly employed by Taos Alive, but when this position was created, she applied for it and she's now the state coordinator. She was planning to be here tonight, but wasn't able to make it, but hopefully at some point in the future we can get the city of Espanola in contact with her and hopefully provide some prevention resources to, to you and your community. There's also the O R S portion of HIDA, which is Buhamasante. That stands for the Overdose Response Strategy, which has comprised of two, two people, myself and the new public health analyst, who is starting a new position, Cassie. Say hi to the city council and the members of the community.
Welcome.
She's, she's just started, so we have an opportunity for her to come and kinda get a, a look at what we do. I'm looking forward to working with her in the future and hopefully coming up with some strategies to reduce the overdose, overdose problem in our state and in our communities. Next slide, please. So the O R S, or the Overdose Response Strategy, is, is a public health and public safety collaboration, again, with the goal of reducing overdose deaths. It's comprised of a drug intelligence officer, which is me, and a public health analyst, which is Cassie. We work together on drug-related problems across the public health and public safety spectrum. And there is a version of me in every state in the, in the evening. Next slide, please. Again, this is just a little description of what our, what our specific duties are. We just try to, basically the short of it is we try to collaborate with, with the stakeholders, be a public health and public safety, get everybody on the shame sheet of music, share resources, provide resources to communities that are needed and hopefully end up with a reduction in drug deaths in our state. Next slide, please. I am gonna present some information about the drug trends in the United States, in New Mexico and in the Rio River, Espanol community. Next slide, please. So obviously the, the populations around the country are different in every state. This, this graph that's presented right there is an attempt to kind of, kind of put everybody on the same, same scale and compare apples to apples. So what it does is it takes overdose deaths, it computes them as how many deaths per hundred thousand percent, or hundred, hundred thousand population. So those numbers that are shown show the number of deaths for every hundred thousand people. So if you imagine, let's say the city of Santa Fe is eighty, ninety thousand. In Santa Fe, if Santa Fe was represented in New Mexico, the forty-seven point two deaths per hundred thousand. That was the twenty twenty-two statistic. New Mexico is the eighth highest death rate in the United States. Next slide, please. These are the, the drug trends from nineteen ninety-nine to two thousand and twenty-one. These figures represent overdose deaths in the United States total. As you can see, it was an increase from what it was in nineteen ninety-nine, approximately twenty thousand, to just over hundred thousand deaths in twenty twenty-one. So if you imagine, let's use Santa Fe as an example, population approximately eighty-eight, ninety thousand. Imagine every year a city the size of Santa Fe, every person that lives in that city disappears. They're gone. They died of drug overdose. That's how serious the problem is in New Mexico. Next slide, please. So this is the numbers for New Mexico. It's basically the same chart that we just looked at. That was for the United States. This chart represents the New Mexico overdose death trends. The last chart ended in twenty twenty-one. This one has three additional years. We have twenty twenty-two, twenty-three and twenty-four. As you can see, the numbers spiked in twenty twenty-one. If there is any good news that I, I'm able to tell you all tonight, it looks like the overdose deaths in twenty twenty-four are down from nine hundred last year to about seven hundred this year, which is good news, but still at seven hundred is about what it was, higher than it was in twenty nineteen. But if it's a downward trend, I guess we'll take the good news. Next slide, please. So back to the per hundred thousand population. This is a comparison of New Mexico to the rest of the United States for the average deaths per hundred thousand. This is a comparison of New Mexico to the rest of the United States for the average deaths per a hundred thousand uh in the United States. So again, this is just trying to say the population in New Mexico and California are obviously different, right? So we want to put it in a scale where it kind of makes sense when you compare us to the other states. As you can see, historically, the the death rate for overdose deaths has been higher in New Mexico, almost double what it was in the rest of the country. Currently, we're at about forty-six or forty-seven deaths per hundred thousand statewide average. Next slide, please. So when it comes to Rio Riva, it's a different story, right? These are by county deaths per a hundred thousand. So this this slide is kind of, so it's kind of hard to read. It shows two, basically it's showing two slides superimposed on each other. So the dark color represents the total number of deaths, and then the orange color represents the the average average comparison of the deaths per a hundred thousand. And if you look over on the far right, Rio Riva is at approximately hundred and forty deaths per a hundred thousand. That's approximately five or six times the national average. So definitely a serious problem that's happening here in your community. Um, the total numbers, again, if you look at the at the dark color, it's approximately fifty deaths. But again, that represents almost a hundred and forty deaths per a hundred thousand. Next slide, please. This is a breakdown of the overdose deaths. Where does this information come from? Is uh one of the partners that HIDA works with is Office of Medical Investigators, so we obtain data from the OMI. Uh, they provide me with that data that includes the age and the types of deaths or the type of drugs that are involved. So if you, as you can see, uh, there's typically out of four people that die of overdose death, four of them, I'm sorry, three of them are gonna be a male, one of them is gonna be a female. Uh, the highest range where where drug deaths occurs is at thirty-five to forty-four years of age. And again, if there's any good news, if you look down at the bottom, we're not having a really high number of overdose deaths in 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 the state. But again, I mean, any number is unacceptable relative to those young kids. But if there's any good news, it's it's not so high. Next slide, please. So I took the the overdose death numbers and I kind of put them in with the highest or with the leading causes of death in the state of New Mexico. And just to qualify this, overdose deaths are included in accidents and suicide, right? So there are subcategories of those, but I put it in there so we can look at it and just kind of see. There's more overdose deaths in New Mexico every year than there is from diabetes, Alzheimer's, suicide, homicide, and automobile accidents. So it's definitely a statewide problem statewide, and it's even more more of a problem here in your own community. Next slide, please. We did, I did do some analysis of what drugs are involved in the in the deaths that are reported. As you can see, in two thousand twenty-three, uh, fentanyl was the and actually, I think, I think these, some of these colors are factors. Twenty twenty-four is gonna be the the green. Let me back up a little bit. Twenty twenty-four is gonna be, is gonna be blue, and then twenty twenty-three is gonna be the orange red color. Yeah, that's 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 right. I'm sorry. So the percentage, yeah, that's correct. So the percentage of fentanyl that that is resulting in death has actually dropped statewide. Uh, and it's been replaced by methamphetamine as a as a major drug involved in overdose deaths in the state, which I don't know if is a good news or a bad news. I don't even know what's what's causing it. There's been some speculation that it's the widespread distribution of loxone. Uh, it's possibly a wellness or possibly some change in the drug supply, but it's definitely changed the 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 drug picture, right? As you can see, uh, the numbers are 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 changing right from year to year. Next slide, please. So again, the biggest piece of the pie is the the currently methamphetamine, but followed closely by fentanyl. As you can see, those numbers are are changing from year to year, but they do stay in about the same proportions. Excuse me. Next slide, please. So what I did in this slide is I took the the one, two slides back, and then I created a slide which is just for Rio Riva County. As you can see, the major cause of death in Rio Riva County is fentanyl, which is a higher percentage compared to the rest of the state. So the the drug problem is a little bit different than the rest of the state here. I know historically, Rio Riva County has had a problem with heroin. Uh, that has been a generational problem. So I was kind of surprised to see that the the number of heroin deaths is lower in Rio Riva than than the statewide average. But again, the the fentanyl is what's killing people in this side of the state. Next slide, please. So this is a look at the substances involved. Uh, again, in the toxicology portion, the people passed away from from overdose deaths. The majority, and this is breaking it down by the number of substances in your system. The majority, again, are are gonna be two substance overdose, and the majority of those are fentanyl, methamphetamine. Again, those reflect that same information that we already looked at on the slide. But uh, one substance is gonna be methamphetamine is again a major cause of death. And this is statewide for two thousand twenty-three. Next slide, please. So one of the partners that we work with is Ideal Options, the treatment clinic that provides counseling and substance abuse treatment for people who come in and wanna get help with their problems. When they start getting services, they do a genetic test, and these are the substances that are that are onboard when they start their treatment. As you can see, it's almost the same graph as that we looked at previously for the people who who die from overdose deaths. It's primarily either one or two substances, and again, it's again, it's mostly methamphetamine, fentanyl, followed by cocaine, and then the other drugs. Next slide, please. So this is a a recent study that that showed that there's a link between suicide and drug overdoses. Of the top three counties in the United, or of the top ten counties in the United States, three of them are in New Mexico. So it's definitely a problem here. And I add that slide just to kind of show that there is a problem in our community and that's a component of the of the problem that that needs to be addressed. Next slide, please. So this is where we get into the OD Map, which is a a free program provided by HIDA to governmental entities to help track the overdose problem. If you want to address and, you know, implement a strategy to deal with the overdose problem, it's a valuable tool because it gives uh gives you the ability to see where the overdose problems are occurring and provides you with spike lurks so you can provide uh services in those areas, be it public health or public public health or public safety, or whatever's appropriate for for your community. Next slide, please. So this is about a two-minute video that kind of describes the OD Map. If if we're good for time, we can we can take a look at it. If we're running short on time, I don't want to be respectful all the time, and we can just go on to the next one. Okay, we're going on. Or maybe we ought to take a look at the video. Or maybe we won't. If it's in a PDF, we're not gonna be able to look at the video. That's fine. It's just basically a a a video that, again, describes how OD Map works, what it does. But if you Okay, we're good. Yeah, if you get to that slide and you just click on the the center of it, about three or four, if you click on the screen, it should play as long as there's a a link. I think you may need to start the the presentation. Press play and then, yeah, enable content. I think if you press the start this slideshow, you'll be able to click on the screen here.
It doesn't show on the screen.
Oh, that's fine. We can, we can skip over it. It is available online, so you all can take a look at it at some point in the future if you wanted to. I can provide that link to to Chief and you know, let y'all take a look at it at your convenience. So this is just a a quick description of some of the things that OD Map can do for for you and your community. Ultimately, the the beneficiaries of using OD Map are are the residents of your community, right? So you're able to provide a provide services to them. Uh, we like to have the data in there and be able to look at it statewide, but I mean, the the most the people benefit the most from it, again, are residents of your community. So this is a screenshot of the two thousand twenty-three overdoses and the two thousand twenty-four overdoses. I had it displayed as a heat map. As you can see, the the highest areas are Albuquerque and Los Cruces, which is a little surprise, but then the other big area where there's a whole large grouping of whom is is Santa Fe and Espanola. Next slide, please. So this is a OD Map description of, if we can go up a little bit, I think it's two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four, again, for your community, uh, your area. So OD Map is able to, you know, just circle out the area and pick how many or display how many overdoses are are showing in in that particular area. I was able to just make a square around the the Taos, Rio Riva, Espanola community. As you can see, in two thousand twenty-three, there was ninety-five overdose deaths, and in two thousand twenty-four, it went down to almost another seventy. Can we go back though? Yeah, we're down to sixty-three, so there is a reduction in the the number of overdose deaths in your community, so there there is some good news. Next slide, please. So again, here we are in the Espanola uh community. So what we're looking at is two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four. The diamonds represents an overdose death. The circles represent a non-fatal overdose event. The problem is the non-fatal data is not very accurate. There was, there's currently no entering the the data for non-fatal overdoses. The the fatal information is provided by OMI to me, and I entered it, but it's several months behind. So we're hoping to to work, move forward with the partnership with the city of Espanola so we can get that data entered into into OD Map, so you guys will be able to have a a up-to-date look at what's going on in your community. But as we can see, the the number of overdose deaths went up in two thousand twenty-three from two thousand twenty-two. The the middle one is twenty-five in two thousand twenty-two, uh, thirty-six in two thousand twenty-three, and then down to twenty-seven in two thousand twenty-four. And that is that whole entire community, which includes, uh, I think it includes a portion of Taos as well as Espanola, the surrounding area. Next slide, please. Uh, that concludes my presentation. Again, this is me. I don't have a photograph. This, she has just started with with the overdose response strategy program. So again, this is kind of her initiation into what we do. But there is a a QR code if you wanted to take a picture of that slide. There's some resources available online that can help you direct how to obtain the loxone treatment. And my email address is on there, so if anybody needs to contact me or they're interested in additional information, I'd be happy to help you out to the best of my ability. And that is all that I had. Any questions?
May I approach and take a seat? Thank you, Mr. Wren, for your presentation and for all this information concerning our community. Uh, it's enlightening, to say the least. Uh, I'm grateful that the number seemed to be going down instead of the other direction. I welcome HIDA back to the city of Espanola with open arms and even more related that the center is nearby Albuquerque, and that means that we could possibly have better communication between this end and your end today. I am curious about, the information that we're receiving from you is all county-based. So you literally work with counties, my understanding.
So the way we're getting this information is, again, I have taken, where I get the the overdose death data from OMI, and it goes by the address. So I put it into the OD Map system, and it classifies it by county, so we're able to search it by county. But if you look back a couple of slides, can we go back to the one that had three images? Side by side again? We just passed it.
The other direction.
So if you look at this slide right here, one of the one of the functionalities that's built into OD Map is you're able just to select the area. So if you wanna select just the city limits, you can do that. If you wanna select just, you know, the county. Again, the, your community here is kind of unique in that it has a couple of counties. It has a purple or yeah, it has native, native lines, so it's kind of hard to get a good picture of exactly what's going on. But this, again, this tool that that uh you guys have had available for y'all to use is able to pick which areas, and you can get a good good idea of what's going on. Uh, one of, again, one of the other uh, one of the other functionalities that's built into it is you can send out a spike lurk. And there's a a number of overdoses that exceeds the threshold. You can send out an email to whoever you want sent to saying, hey, there is currently a spike, an overdose spike in in this area, and you take whatever measure you think is appropriate. So that, that's a functionality that's built built into it. However, when I'm putting the overdoses in three months later, right, it doesn't really provide any use because it's not telling the information. So again, we're hoping to work with the city of Espanola, police department, fire, whoever ends up having to do that, to get that information in time and matter so that that information be available to to you and your community.
Well, thank you again for being here. I'm really grateful that that HIDA is interested in the city of Espanola and what is going on here. As you can tell from from the demographic that you provided, uh, the only other county that has as high numbers is Breno Rio, and and they have a huge population in comparison to our community. So most of those that are in Rio Riva are probably within the city of Espanola. It's very concerning. Uh, I just am really grateful that you guys are here, and I'm looking forward to any work that we can possibly do together.
Yeah, I I did an analysis for for the city of Los Cruces, and I broke it down. In 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 Los Cruces, I think it was seventy-eight percent of the overdose deaths occur within the city limits. And I would imagine that it's probably the same or very similar here in Espanola.
I had a question. Were you sort of with the the border being tightened and the pressure being put on the cartel? Is that, are you guys seeing any reduction in fentanyl traffic and thus in overdoses?
So it's it's hard to say. The the number of seizures at the at the border has gone up, right? So the the seizure of fentanyl pills going in, the the standard the standard belief is that the precursor chemicals come from from China, some from India that come to Mexico. The fentanyl is produced in Mexico and then smuggled in the United States to the Mexico border. Uh, with the changes in the picture of of what's going on down the border, hopefully that that will be impacted. I can't say for sure. There was some some change in the formulation of fentanyl pills. So the the percentage of fentanyl in the OD Map thirty pills, which is what the majority is, has has steadily gone up. It was, you know, five years ago, it was three in ten pills contains a a a a percent amount of fentanyl that's fatal, right? And then it got up to, a couple of years ago, it was seven in ten pills containing what would be a fatal amount of fentanyl that would recently, it's gone down. The the latest information from DEA is that it's down to like five again, maybe five even lower than that. Five out of ten pills contain a lethal dose of fentanyl. So there's been some change going on in the drug supply. What's caused it? It's it's not a sure thing. You can speculate, but we didn't hope to answer your question.
And if it's a rising, has fentanyl happened or has fentanyl supply dropped?
I I don't suspect that's what it is, but again, it's it's speculation. There's no cell intelligence that says yes or or what's going on, but it's probably what's going on. There's no solid intelligence that says yes or what's going on, but it's probably what's going on. Yes, sir.
Counselor Du. Yes, Kevin. I saw the Santa Fe Mexicans report on their analysis on the Haida data earlier, I think a couple of weeks ago or so. And they stated that basically, there was an eight percent drop amongst New Mexico broadly, but in particular, Rio Riba County stabilized, it was about the same as the previous year, and that Santa Fe County had a huge spike, about sixteen percent. Do you know why in particular Santa Fe County had such a hot spot? How much of it may be in the City of Espanola? And also, do you think, and I can kind of answer that question you were talking about a little bit earlier, but do you think that this is just a bit of a stabilization or the synthesizing of fentanyl? And that's why it receives a bit of a decrease in overdoses?
So let me try to answer your question. I think the report that you're talking about was the Department of Health data. They relayed and released the data, and that is actually 2023 data, so they're kind of a year behind. So what I was able to present tonight is a little bit different than the Department of Health data. Again, they're a year behind, but they showed a decrease of, what was the number, I think seven or eight percent? But from 2023 to 2024, it looks like it's going to be a twenty percent decrease. So once those numbers are officially released from the Department of Health, I'm pretty sure we're going to see a significant decrease. As to why, again, it's going to be mostly speculation. Again, there were some things that happened in the cartels. One of the things that was kind of not a major, but it coincided with the changing of drug supply, was the arrest of El Ohio, and that started a war within the cartels, one of the cartels in Mexico. So right about that same time, there was a significant change in the fentanyl supply that was found in the streets. So it was containing fake fentanyl, so it was not even fentanyl drugs. So at the same time, that was going on, the overdose deaths seemed to decrease a little bit. So again, it's speculation. Do you think there is something to do with it? Again, can't tell with certainty.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Just to follow up on that, Counselor Du, there was the ordinance up in Yama and stuff like that. You know, we picked up a lot of overdoses and stuff in there, so that's why numbers are kind of going down. And that's like Santa Fe Department, you know, all these stuff in Santa Fe County, that's why it was kind of brought, you know? So just want to throw that out there.
Counselor, flip that toy.
I just want to say thank you both for your time. I know that this was way later, didn't anticipate it on staying, but I just want to say thank you and safe travels on the way back.
Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate you coming tonight. What a very controversial subject to be here tonight at the Council chambers. Obviously, it's a situation that's impacting our community in so many ways. And fortunately, for the last fifty years, I mean, this has been the epicenter of the drug wars in our community, in our state, in our country. And this is ground zero, and right now, fifty years later, unfortunately, we're reaping the fortunacies of that. Thank you for being here tonight, Senator, your patience.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on, Counselor comments? Counselor Pedro Valdez?
Okay, I just have two comments, and I just want to say thank you for the replacement of the Collie Parks on Barbie Street and the West Side Homes. Thank you. Other report coming up, good reports on the streets, the streets and islands have been kept up. Espanola will be hit. Thank you, Mayor, Councilman, and the legislators.
Reveal the screen.
Counselor Du. I first want to thank the people of El Yano for coming out tonight. I think that it was important to hear from them directly, and I saw many of my neighbors tonight, and I'm glad that they, you know, participated in our process, and it was good to hear their feedback. I think it'll help a lot going forward. I'm also really glad that the police chief and Haida brought all this data to us tonight. I unfortunately lost a northern classmate to an overdose earlier this week. That brings, I've been unfortunately counting about forty classmates throughout the course of my years that have passed away from overdoses. And I think that the federal data is necessary, and that federal cooperation with the federal government is vital to tackling this issue. That's why I was really concerned when I found out that Santa Fe County is unfortunately doubling down on its sanctuary policy and focusing on further distancing their ability to work with federal agencies. I have previously called for both Rio Riba and Santa Fe County to please provide carve-outs in their sanctuary policies to address specifically drug crime or drug-related issues and work with Immigration Customs Enforcement as well as the DEA in tackling members of the cartel that are in our community. And we all know, as we heard tonight, the vast majority of the issue comes from fentanyl. And fentanyl is being imported into the United States. There aren't sophisticated enough labs within the United States to synthesize the drug. It's coming from China, being shipped to the Mexican cartels, and the Mexican cartels are crossing it over our border. We know that this is an international problem, and local police departments do not have the resources alone or to tackle this issue. And we need to work with our federal partners. So I call again on my county commissioner, Mr. Green, to please look into amending the resolution and putting a carve-out for drug issues and drug-related crimes when it comes to immigration enforcement. Because we need to get the cartel in any way we possibly can. And that means tackling this issue and working with any federal partner that will provide that. So I really hope that the Santa Fe County Commission can come back together and amend that resolution and work to look at this drug crisis. Now...
He's from Miami Vice.
The Department of Health data is different than the Haida provided tonight, but in that Department of Health data in 2023, there was at least five of sixteen percent in Santa Fe County in particular. And I really hope that they look at that data and try to figure out ways that we can tackle this problem from the enforcement angle. Because as long as fentanyl is a dollar a pill, we could put every single recovery program in place, and the barrier of entry to getting back on drugs is so low that unfortunately, some people are just going to take that route. We have to make sure that the supply is tackled. So I really hope that Santa Fe County will take that into consideration. I am also encouraged by Elijah, and want to thank him for working with me on trying to get the Eagles and Lions Club to help with some cleanup projects. He says he's going to contact me later this week, and hopefully we can work on that, getting some of the parks, particularly Ranchitos, and other areas cleaned. So thank you, Elijah. You've been really vital working with me on that, and I'm going to keep pushing to have those folks come in. Eagles have already given, he said, as long as someone spearheads it, they have the manpower, they volunteer at least ten people. So hopefully we can get that done. And then Javin Corries texted me and told me to tell the city council that they're all invited to the next school board meeting that they would love to see and hear and have more cooperation with the city. And I also want to shout out Elijah again for helping connect me with the DOT to try to get some sort of more signage on El Yano Road so that we can make sure that our high schoolers are safe and that there's some slowdown. So thank you again, Elijah, for helping me on trying to get that solved. I know that the school board is also very appreciative and other partners too. So thank you for helping spearhead that. Hopefully DOT listens and we can get something done there. I also wanted to congratulate the Sun Devils for their wins, and the best of luck to their continued success. The basketball team, I don't know if they won, we're having a meeting as they're playing, so just good luck and thank you to them. And finally, since we talked a lot about faith tonight, I just want to extend my prayers to the Holy Father, Pope Francis, and hope his recovery or he can, or you know, he deals with his problems, so thank you.
Counselor Toya.
I want to start off by saying happy birthday, Counselor Valdez. Like I said before, it is an honor to put this journal aside and say, happy birthday. The other thing I want to mention is, starting March eleventh through the twenty-first, we will be doing a, it's a, I guess we could call it a clothing drive, but it's for Little League, it's for the youth. And so we're asking those that may have cats, shoes, belts, and maybe gloves that are in good condition to bring those over to Lucero Center. There'll be a box for donations there. And the way it'll work is on, I believe, March twenty-second, we will host a swap. And so people can come in, you don't have to donate to come and take things that you may need. But as a coach, and it's brought up quite a bit, you know, my kid grows like a weed, or before the season's over, their shoes no longer fit and things like that. And so we're just, we're doing that for the community, hopefully, that was asked, they asked us to do that last year. So there's a couple of people from the Espanola Valley, Little League Board, that are putting that together, so I wanted to mention that. The other thing is, I just want to say, you know, tonight's topic was hard to hear, especially, I like hearing the success stories in our valley. Those are the ones that really get me and tug at my heartstrings. But I want to give a shout out and thanks to anybody that has ever helped anyone in any which way, even if it's just comment, you know, pointing them in the right direction. There are so many people that help that we don't get to recognize, we don't get to hear from, and even mental health, right? It doesn't always have to be drugs and alcohol addiction, mental health is a real, real thing. So I just wanted to say thank you to everybody. And then I also wanted to commend Mr. Sena on his comment on how the public schools need to get on board with allowing our youth to utilize their facilities. It is very frustrating when some of our youth are having to practice outside in very cold temperatures just because they cannot get access to a gym. So if you could pass along the information on the school board meeting, that would be greatly appreciated because that is something that I would like to partner with them on, including the Lucero Center. I know coaches use it, but the coaches have to pay out of their pockets to be able to utilize the Lucero Center there. The last thing I'll say is, we sat down several months ago as a council, and we said we had goals, and we wanted to work on things. We talked about youth, and tonight we heard loud and clear, that's what our community wants, the city would challenge us as a governing body. Let's pick one, and let's unite finally on something and show the community that we really do care. And if it's the kids, then let's pick one. Because quite frankly, I'm sick and tired of the talking, and we say, oh, we want to do this, you want to do that, but we're really not showing anything for it, so that's my challenge to the council.
Thank you. I'll be very sure, I promise, because my ribs are showing. Shocking, but anyhow, shopping cart ordinance that I've been working on for May moons now, soon is what I hear. I'm supposed to look at it tonight. I know it's getting commingled with a squat ordinance, so it's going to be meshed together. Yeah, so it's coming, you know, fingers crossed. Oh, the other thing was, we had a crowd, we should have announced it by money actually, Counselor, while everybody was in here. But you know, we totally just whatever it was. But Counselor Toya, I'll break to that intergenerational trauma, and I think that should be our main goal, is just focus on the youth, period, and then, you know, work from there, you know, get this at the roots. Thank you.
Thank you. I was going to really put update tomorrow. We have our meeting with the developer and with the subdivision that we had planned to come. We have not let much of our details out, I'm sorry, we haven't talked or mentioned too many details only because we're still in the process of finalizing things. Plus, I asked Counselor Toya and Counselor Valdez, since it is in their district, to meet with me at some point so we can go over the plans and things like that. And then, so we'll be there tomorrow, myself, Mike and Elijah, and the city managers going to join us. And then Mike and I have a meeting I can be next week with the schools to assist them when we're closing. So we're excited to be able to assist there as we can. So we hope that things happen, and hopefully we'll see some calls soon.
Manager from the mayor, I just want to thank you all. This evening's discussion was not a light topic. I'm offended by some comments by some members of the public and how they feel regarding some members of the population. I think it's misguided as well. I also take offense, there's comments about how we are evolving as a community, and it's not just here, it's growing across the country. It's a situation plaguing everywhere, but it seems to be very prevalent in our community. And rather than finger pointing, which I believe a majority of this governing body is committed to, we'd rather focus on solutions and such, and so I probably should acknowledge all that that came before us this evening. We're all vested in this community, I'm vested in this community, most of our staff is vested in this community, and they're committed to this community striving and being successful. You know, I take offense consistently, there's comments about this town that's the furthest being from us. I myself, I'm a business owner, I own property in the city, I own rental properties. I actually have a property, a rental property about a quarter mile away from this proposed location. I take offense to these discussions because it's misguided. It's hate and vitriol that spread to divide this community. I'm consistently being told about, there seems to be a war between the two sides of this valley. Last I knew, this valley was incorporated in nineteen twenty-five, and when they made the municipal limits, it included the east side as well. It's extremely offensive when we can't work together as a body. But even more so, it's offensive when we can't work together as a community when we're trying to divide this between the east and the west side of town. I also want to acknowledge and applaud and appreciate, if you guys haven't seen, we're doing significant improvements at Vietnam Veterans Park up here. We have new lighting, thank you, Elijah, that was coordinated. A new playground is going up. These are continued investments in our youth far valley. We're spending at least half a million dollars to Vietnam Veterans World Park. If you haven't had the chance, come on here down to Vodens Park. There's another new playground that was put in just recently, about a month ago. About three hundred thousand dollars worth of legislative allocation put there. We're standing, and hopefully we'll receive tomorrow, I understand from an update from the city manager, back. We're beginning construction on the Santa Cruz Park, another one point five, one point four million dollar investment into our community for our youth. I've also, I've talked to the legislative delegation, and their big priority, and we all informed them this year, was our youth as our goals. And so therefore, the legislative delegation, which consists of State Senator Haramio, Representative Sutin Edeta, have committed to funding at least a million dollars towards the Lucero Center for much-needed improvements, which is the roofing and the H rack of this aging facility that turns fifty-one years old on March fifth. This is a commitment to our youth. I also heard a comment tonight about the elderly. I find that very offensive because we're creating a community that's inclusive of all age gaps. We're not here to spread hate and vitriol even between age demographics. I find that very offensive. We can rise above this, and we're better than this. I'm so excited about what we're doing on Silky Way, and I'm sure that's going to be very beneficial for all the people in Valley State. And I know that Casalas have a very good friend who lives in Valley State, that they can talk to and communicate with that with them. So I want to thank you all for what you do. Oh, and the bird tower, we're on track with that. There's a lot of things happening and coming to fruition here. Our staff is working diligently and we appreciate them for what they do. The sacrifices that they endure, the harassment, the blittling, the atmosphere that has been created here by a small group of people is unfortunate. And we appreciate you for what you do. And so thank you all for what you do in our community. And I think we have one last thing and that's items proposed for council consideration, discussion items, action items. I do want to share with you, this is probably the smallest agenda I've ever seen that has taken a long, yes. Moving on, family professional services, retroactive renewal agreement, presented by Mr. Patrick Gualela, Deputy Finance Director.
Honorable Mayor, honorable Counselors. What item are we on now? Are we on now?
We're at it because of one thing, one thing with professional services.
The only action item.
Okay, so that's the YMCA. So in front of you, I think you have this in your package. It was a retroactive renewal for the YMCA. It's going to be funded again to the councils. Then went down the way for RFP. The RFP was submitted and it was chosen, but we can't disclose who was responsible for that RFP. But if there were things that were approved, so we're going to do the back retroactive fees that were due to the YMCA. Or she made by Mr. Francisco Martinez, second, Counselor, you do?
All right, guys. I'm out of here. Thank you, guys, for stopping by. Appreciate you, guys, every single one of you. Thank you. You guys, have a good night. Deuces.